Somebody's name right there.
Here, let me see.
And that would be me.
Don't worry about it, I don't need it.
I think we got a line of sight.
No, no, you're busy talking to the candidate over there.
I had to teach us.
What are you running for?
We gotta make sure the dude is okay with that.
Someone's chasing for you.
I have events almost every night, so I'm in an event like two nights down the road this week. I'm doing events, like networking events.
Um, I got this for you, just a case. So A's.
I know.
It looked, it looked, it looked like squishing you too. Photos look great.
I don't know how many people are gruffing you.
So you did.
I'm here for nineteen seventy to nineteen seventy-eight.
That doesn't count.
Then I moved back.
Those were the wonder years for me. I'm still wonder.
Georgia. I lived on Hillsborough Street.
Did you really?
I did.
Lisbon. In seventy-eight? Well, we were neighbors.
Nineteen seventy-seven.
I lived on Dunkley, I lived on Dunkley Street.
Oh, wow. Oh, that's my favorite street. I learned to, um, ride my bike in the blue cross.
We went here long enough.
It's two hours of bus.
On the street, you're correct.
I live right.
It's two hours more.
Houses up.
We went to the, sorry, top on a coast.
On Allison Street or Dunkley?
No, on Lisbon.
Lisbon was.
Do you have one of those USBs?
The paper was the Bailey's, did you know the Bailey's, Helen Bailey?
We can try to see if mine will charge ours, but I got two of them.
Lisbon was, Lisbon was.
In seventeen seventy. Cross Bucio parking and so the building.
Yeah, I was a red house.
I don't know them.
They were a men's house, they were a blue house on the road.
Yeah, it was gone now, right? Yeah, they were my next door neighbors.
Yes.
Oh, that was one of those.
I do, uh, let me.
Yeah, I just went to your grandma's.
Do you have your adapter in your secondary?
Yes. First and second, first and second drawer.
Slam it into a rock or something.
Mine's like fifty-two, but I'm.
Here it.
I think, I don't know, like it'll, well, no, I don't know if mine will charge yours.
Suzanne?
Yeah, we'll try it.
Is that what you need?
Oh, yeah, like.
Oh, my gosh.
Jesus.
Just these things.
All five fingers.
I'm gonna give everybody a look.
All five fingers.
Don't break my counsel drawer.
Yeah.
It's a whole kit and caboodle.
She's gonna be late maybe.
Let's work in top.
Is this something new or did you do something like she was gonna be here? I was just saying, where's the plug from?
She's running like.
Yes, that's the result of.
She'll sneak in the meeting when she gets it.
She has the, um, that's me.
She's actually turning up taking it everybody's.
Such an engine.
Oh, it was the, yeah.
Gales and trails.
Totally. I was gonna say it was a young professional stink. They've got to give us a little thing, no.
I'm not ready for that right now.
I don't think I'm gonna do that.
I'm not up for that.
They told me, that's what I thought it was at first. Oh, yeah.
Do you see where Ellen's, I just saw.
Yeah.
Scar pony is running.
It's funny, not funny.
They're excited.
Yep, yep, it just.
However, she was.
Press yourself.
For the prime. I want to show her confident about this.
Sorry, turn that off.
It'll be interesting to see how she does.
September twenty-first meeting of the Concord City Planning Board, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Chairman Woodburn?
Here.
Counselor Pierce?
Here.
Member Rosenberger?
Here.
Member Hicks?
Here.
Member Fox?
Here.
Member Savage?
Here.
Member Santa Cruz?
Here.
Member Smith Meyer?
Here.
Full house tonight, welcome everyone, we do have a quorum, we'll open the meeting, uh, first item on the agenda is to approve the minutes as submitted from the August seventeenth planning board meeting, would someone like to make a motion to approve those minutes as submitted?
So moved. Second.
Motion's been made in second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, uh, quick item overviews for us tonight, if there's anyone here for item seven C, it has been postponed to no date certain.
Can I correct myself?
You can.
I did not update those numbers correctly, so it is.
Oh dear.
I know, her eight, uh, eight H and H, eight I, H and I.
Eight H and eight I.
Right.
You sure it's not eight F and eight G?
Don't mess with me now.
Okay, just wanna make sure, so eight H and eight I.
And seven C's good.
And eight H is to no date certain, and eight I is to the October nineteenth meeting, is that correct? Okay, with some, I know we don't need to do anything, just as a public notice.
Make a motion to.
We'll make a motion, uh, someone like to make a motion to push those items off to the no date certain for the eight H and the October meeting for the eight I.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, we have determination to completeness component, um, one item on the agenda for determination to completeness. Uh, determination of completeness is Granite State Credit Union, motion to determine complete, uh, not a right, not a, sorry. Not a development of regional impact, and set the planning board hearing for October nineteenth. Would someone like to make a motion to determine the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and set the public hearing for the next meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, uh, design review by consent, um, you need to recuse yourself on six A, is that correct, Teresa?
Shall I leave?
No, you don't have to leave, that's fine.
It's consent.
Uh, consent agenda, so, uh, anybody in the audience, we, uh, address, uh, there's only two items on consent, but the two items on the consent agenda mean that, uh, they've been reviewed, um, and put on the consent agenda item with recommendations from Architectural Design Review. Uh, we will vote on them in their entirety for both items, if anyone has any questions or concerns about those, if you could make yourself known. If not, any member of the board wanna push or pull any of those items from consent? No, uh, we'll look for a motion to approve items six A and six B as submitted with Architectural Design Review comments.
So moved.
Second. Motion's been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, look at us speeding right along to item seven in our agenda, I told you, gotta say it, public hearings. We will look at item seven A, design review, can we read that item into the record?
Claude Gentium on behalf of LCC Barrett requests ADR approval for facade changes to fifty-eight North Main Street in the Central Business Performance District. Um, Architectural Design Review, um, did recommend approval, uh, this is on the agenda because it's a building permit in Performance District.
Okay, it is downtown building, I think it's, what, the Post Restaurant, is that right?
Next, yeah.
That's the door.
Next door, well, I, yeah.
Well, it is the post, is that?
Whatever we call that building, uh, any staff update, do we have a staff update, or can we move right through it?
I think you can go right through it.
Okay, um, any questions from the board? Uh, would someone like to make a motion to grant, oh, hang on just a second. Someone like to make a motion to approve that application as submitted with Architectural Design Review, uh, comments?
So moved.
Motion is made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, that moves us on to item eight A in our agenda.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Uh, when we get to item eight G, I will be recusing myself.
Okay. Counselor Pierce will be recused on eight G, any other recusals on any of the, uh, site plan subdivisions or conditional use permit applications? Okay, let's get item eight A right into the record if we could.
Granite Engineering LLC on behalf of Fifteen Integra Drive LLC, which is PITCO, requests an extension to a major site plan approval for Fifteen Integra Drive in the Industrial District. Um, staff has no issue with this, we recommend approval of the extension request.
Okay, uh, any other comments?
Second.
Questions?
Let's gotta close it.
No, yeah, no, anybody in the audience wish to address this application? Nope, uh, we'll close the public hearing, I believe I heard a.
Move approval.
Motion to approve and a second.
And a second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, that is extended. And let's move on to the next item on our agenda, eight B, if we could read that into the record.
Tarbell and Broddich, PA, on behalf of EWT fifty-four LLC, requesting a conditional use permit for the use of a restaurant at seventy, seventy-two Washington Street in the neighborhood Commercial District, um, staff recommends the application be determined complete, not a development of regional impact, and to open the public hearing.
Okay, so we've got a determination of completeness component, staff has found the application complete, not a development of regional impact, uh, and recommends opening the public hearing, someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact?
So moved.
Yeah, sorry.
Second.
Motion's been made in seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, public hearing's open, let's get a quick staff update, if the applicant's here, if you wanna pop on up, that would be great.
Um, so, uh, there's not a whole lot to report, they request a series of variances from the ZBA which they received for parking, um, there is no parking available and there's no site work proposed. Um, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit, um, and I will let the applicant take over from there.
Alrighty, welcome to the table, if you could state your names for the record?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Friedrich Mokel of Tarbell and Broddich, on behalf of the applicant, with me tonight is Miles Tarbell of Keystone Management Company.
Yeah, could you pull that a little closer for me?
I will.
Well, we can hear you fine, the millions watching probably won't be able to hear you, so.
Be surprised, who watches? No, he wouldn't.
We hear from, we hear from them often.
We hear from them.
Okay, well, tell us a little bit about this project if you could.
I certainly will, thank you, uh, it is located where Washington Street meets Spring Street and Linden Street, if anybody's familiar with that, typically people refer to as the, the store across the street from Checkmate Pizza. Uh, this property is unique, uh, the house was built just after the Civil War, the store was built in fifty-five. And it was a store for years, and, I mean, if anybody wants to take a walk down memory lane or historical lane, it still has some of the original refrigeration equipment in there, that's, you know, deep freezer, produce, et cetera, um, but more, I think since the seventies it operated as, uh, still, uh, a vestige of days gone by when, before we had big supermarkets, most communities, you know, little neighborhoods each had its own supermarket, this is one of them. And in the sixties and seventies, it, it started to, I think, to take out, whether it was pizza or something else, sandwiches like that, and that continued up until it, I don't wanna say it closed, but the last tenant left in October of last year to move on to something else. Unique to this thing is what, when the building went in in fifty-five, the main building on the property was still a single-family residence, in ninety-nine, two thousand, this board approved a site plan, uh, application to convert that building to, uh, seven apartments. And it's been that way in conjunction with the other pri- primary principal use of the store. And why we're here before you is because although the zoning ordinance permits the restaurant as a conditional use, um, I'm sorry, even though it's permitted, we have to come here and get the conditional use permit, um, we were in front of the zoning board because, again, even though the proposed use is permitted, the zoning ordinance, uh, at a change of use triggers full compliance with the zoning ordinance, and this property, just because of the way it was laid out and built before zoning existed, and I, I should re- say that more correctly, zoning existed, but the applicable provisions in the sixties didn't require any parking for this second principal use. Just did, there was no requirement for parking, and that's why it was established to begin with, without any off-street parking, or any other requirements, other than that, it met the required setbacks from the street, and so, that's why we're here today, because the cha- the proposed change in use triggers, uh, parking, and of course, this conditional use permit. The zoning board granted all the variances that were necessary, and there was, uh, I'll call it clerical error, and the zoning board, the first notice of decision from the second hearing indic- erroneously indicated that the variance for the ADA parking was contingent upon Concord's parking committee, and then ultimately the city council designating an ADA spot out front of the store, and the ZBA has since corrected that condition, uh, or corrected the approval to recognize that it was, the ADA variance was not contingent upon Concord designating a parking spot for this particular restaurant. Uh, we were in front of the parking committee several weeks ago, and the parking committee declined to, uh, recommend a designated parking spot to the city council, but that, that's neither here nor there because of the way the ZBA granted the variance without a condition. I think probably recognizing that because it was a political condition, there was no way the applicant could control the process other than make application. So, all the variances are there, I know there were some correspondence and some, uh, some technical legal stuff about the, uh, one abutter appealed, there's the variance decisions to the Superior Court, but there's no stay by statute, so those variances are all still in effect. And that is, I think, the second requirement on conditional use list that, um, the proposed development will establish with all the requirements of the zoning article, and it does. So straightforwardly, um, I understand the abutter's concern, and I, I wanna say some things because it's important to understand the context, and we need to go back in time, re- remember, this thing started as a commercial building back in the fifties, and in the sixties it was a store, in the seventies it was a store, and we had takeout, and it was the same way in the eighties and the nineties, even in the two thousands, and this, uh, this abutter who's voiced concerns, and that's fine. I would just submit to the board that when that abutter bought the property in ninety-five, that abutter bought, when that store was still operating, I would say, I was in Concord in ninety-five, but at ni- near its peak, when I was here in two thousand and one, that was a busy, busy store, it was non-stop. So, and I say it in that context, not to, uh, depreciate the abutter's concerns, but to put them into context, because the abutter's concerns, as I have read them in the attachment, relate not so much to traffic, but this perceived issue with parking. There was a lot of testimony and talk at, at the zoning board, and what's unique about this property and that part of Washington Street, it is one of the oldest, I'll call, particular zoning districts in Concord, going all the way back to the nineteen thirties, when Concord first adopted its zoning ordinance, you can see this special neighborhood Commercial District, unlike the rest of the city, it was just there, on that strip from spring going toward the law school. Uh, I wasn't alive then, but my guess is it had to do something with, uh, the existing use of what was in the law school building at that time, and the commercial aspect of the community that supported whatever that, that larger business was, and so there it is. And so, since the nineteen thirties, Concord's recognized there's something special about these properties and that neighborhood, and it's still designated Neighborhood Commercial District, and I think that in the twenty-twenty proposal, it's still designated as a special Commercial District, Neighborhood Commercial, I think it has a different name going forward if it, if the proposal passes, but anyhow, I want the board to remember that since the thirties, Concord has recognized there's something special about this area. And it's got relaxed standards, because it's always been that way since even before zoning existed. So, in that context, I don't think that the abutter's concern about parking are a legitimate concern, and if any of you have, are familiar with Linden Street, I'd just ask you to think about this particular abutter, and recognize that this abutter has a pretty long driveway with plenty of off-street parking, so I don't, I don't understand from a practical standpoint where the articulated concern has, has a factual basis. But, in any case, it's really neither here nor there, because the zoning board has granted variances from all those requirements. The narrative that accompanies the application reckon, points out that, uh, this conditional use is specifically permitted by the zoning ordinance, so we've met the first two criteria. Public health and safety, uh, and the, in the narrative, we point out that since the nineteen fifties, there's been commerce going on on this property, at that site, at that intersection, and as far as I know, in the twenty-plus years I've been there, there hasn't been a public health or safety issue. At the zoning board, two abutters expressed concern about garbage outside the market, and I understand that's, that's not good. But what was important to recognize is that at some point in the past, the tenant that was there had okayed a, um, a clothing box, or a donation box, and unfortunately, some people took the, the clothing donation box to include couches, bicycles, things that you wouldn't expect to, to be donated as clothing, and that, that was obviously a problem, and that's been corrected, and, you know, of course, no one wants that. But that is, that was sort of, I think, the key aspect of the garbage and, and what to do with it, um, the good news is, is that the building has a vestige from the market, and it's a loading dock that's part of the, the footprint. And the app, the property owner was able to, and we demonstrated this to the zoning board, we're gonna fix up the old loading dock area and put in fencing with a locked area, it'll still be outside, but that's, and, uh, I think, how many, uh, there are ninety-nine gallon?
Ninety-six gallon totes.
Ninety-six gallon totes that are covered, it'll be in a covered area, um, with like a fencing, a new fencing, and it, it'll also be secured, so no one from the public will be able to go and put their trash in it or take trash out, and as far as recyclables, et cetera, those will be inside, there's, even though it's a thirty-two hundred square foot building, most of the, I don't wanna say most, but at least a good half or just under a half is, was all the old, um, cooling areas and storage areas. So there's plenty of internal space to handle the recycling. I know one of staff's comments is about the crosswalk and maybe signing that, I think that's a reasonable request, um, that really, when you go out to the site, uh, the, the crosswalks are there, there's one thing I, I would like to point out, and when we were exploring the ability to have the city designate a handicap spot there, there are various statutory and, and Concord has requirements too, and one of them is the handicap spot and parking spots in general have to be a certain distance from stop signs, there's no stop sign at the intersection of Linden and Washington. So if, um, I don't know.
I mean, Linden's a two-way street, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
There's no stop sign on Linden as it approaches Washington, so that would be the.
It's in somebody's bedroom.
Well, there's a phone pole there, but there's no stop sign. Yes, sir, Mr. Pierce.
Yeah, thank you. But absent a stop sign, state law still requires that at that intersection that cars would stop, right?
Yeah.
So it's, it's a given.
Yeah, I just pointed out to the board, I mean, there's, again, there's some vestiges of times past still existing there, um, that really support the application, and why? This use is really consistent with that neighborhood, um, I know that the, Mr. Savage, who takes issue with this application, uh, likes to distinguish a pizzeria from a restaurant, from Washington Street Cafe, you know, I've been here long enough to know that those are restaurants, they sell food and drink. Uh, Washington Street Cafe, I believe, has, um, thirty-four seats inside, and, or thirty-four total, twenty.
Twenty-five inside and nine outside.
Nine outside, so it's a sit-down restaurant. Checkmate Pizza, sure, it's predominantly delivery, but you can eat outside, I've seen people do that plenty. Sort of the peculiar thing about this, the existing use was that it was takeout, there was no room in the supermarket to sit down and eat, and that's really the big change, is that we're gonna get rid of the market if this is approved, and it'll be a sit-down restaurant, but when you think about the historical uses, and I kind of go at a macro level, what's happening in these three businesses? They're selling food in one way or the other, so is this change in use from a market with takeout to a sit-down restaurant materially different? I don't see it that way. Um, and so in that respect, I don't see the neighborhood changing, um, you may get fewer trips and people coming in, uh, between eight AM or seven AM, whenever the store opened, and, and noon time, whenever this restaurant will open, that, that might change, you'll see reduction in, in traffic that way. But what we did here at the zoning are members of the community in the neighborhood indicating that they're happy that they're gonna have a walkable restaurant. That, that seems to be the, the way of the future with, uh, people's sensibilities, and I think it's a good thing, um, and that kind of speaks to why I think the, the zoning board granted the variances, yes, Mr. Chairman?
Hang on one sec, Counsel Pierce?
Speaking of the restaurant, could you clarify in, in the documentation, I saw forty tables, forty seats, I, I assume this is a forty-seat restaurant?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, not forty tables.
No, I know, I just, I looked, I went, hmm.
Anything outdoors?
Thank you.
No, sir.
No. We, there's no really conceivable place to have outdoor seating for this particular location. You know, one of the issues with the accessible spot was, uh, nicely, historically, the grade was sloped from street level right to the, the door of the store, there, there were no steps, unlike all the other businesses, um, but the way the property lines are, there's simply not, I don't think there's enough space to throw, to put tables out there, I mean, at least not, that's not why we're here tonight.
Okay.
Similarly, that, you know, thinking about, when I think about planning, I think, you know, we, I, I tend, for a lo- I attended a long time, think about that clean slate, what's this new project gonna do, the raw land and the surrounding area and the surrounding neighborhoods, what's, what's interesting here is that we don't have that. We're just talking about changing a use, uh, in a building that the community and neighborhood's been accommodating for, goodness, uh, what's the math, almost seventy years.
So I, I think the important thing is there's enough site work.
Zero site work.
So, again, it, for, for people and for argument's sake, uh, the, the fight here is with the zoning, the zone, you, you've, you've hurdled the, the hard piece of it in the zoning, and we, we say this a lot when people come in, uh, you know, that the fight is usually at the zoning level for certain things, the planning level not as much of a, of a, of a, of a battle, if, or a battleground location, I mean, you're asking for a conditional use permit, it's very common, we do them all the time, uh, it's not a, I, I don't see a lot of, a lot of issues here from the planning side, and I don't, I don't wanna speak for the other board members, but I, I think we've gotta, you know, the narrative is excellent, by the way, I, you know, we, we get the packets the week before, and, and the narrative really helps us kind of understand the project, and understand the ask, and understand what the, what the issues are, so if there's, if there's bumpy issues, uh, the typical process for us is to, is to have you come up, present the project, ask for any feedback, get that feedback, have you come back up and address that feedback again, so I, I wanna just make sure from a, from a process perspective, we're all, we're all looking at it, we don't, there's, it's not a lot here, I don't want it to be incumbent that you have to tell us everything that's gonna happen, or.
Thank you, and I apologize if I were belaboring it.
No, no, no.
My, my concern is that because, uh, this is al- already a contested matter.
Yep.
You know, even before we're coming here today.
Absolutely.
I, I just wanna make sure that I'm going through, but, what, what I need to do.
Dotting the i's and crossing the t's, you're absolutely, feel free.
Yeah, and I think because of the board, I'll just say this, because the board accepted the application as complete, some of the other technical issues, um, are now, I don't, they're, I don't wanna say they're moot, but they're not relevant to a presentation that I could give.
I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Um, the application can, had some discussion about I T E trips, and whether this would trigger any, any further review other than tonight's hearing, and what we laid out for the, the board was that, um, even though there's.
Yeah, we had determined that that wasn't necessary, and we appreciate the information that was provided, it didn't trigger any traffic review study.
Or site plan review, which is the other, because it, this project doesn't meet the threshold requirement for major or minor site plan.
Correct.
And I know that.
It didn't trigger.
And that was something that the, um, the abutter who's raised concerns has, has addressed, so I just.
That, that's again, that's to my point, that's another hurdle that you don't have to, that you don't have to jump over.
So, unless there are any questions of the applicant?
Yep, Counsel Pierce?
Uh, I'm sorry, uh, did, uh, did we discuss the, uh, grease reduction requirement?
No, I read that.
Good call, yeah, thank you, I saw that too.
Okay, and, uh, just one follow-up.
Yep.
But to be clear, with this last discussion we had, absent the grease, the abutters have filed with the Superior Court?
Yes, I got a copy of the.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
Again, and that doesn't have any bearing on our.
Right.
On our conversation, that's a zoning, that's a zoning issue. I did have a question on the narrative, so the photos that are there of the building, is that the current, is the, is that the current look and feel of the building that's there now?
Yeah, the, um, let me look at the day-to-day.
So page four of six shows a front and side view, and then, uh, five of six shows, um, looks like side and back views.
Yeah, I, I took those photos back in April.
Okay, alright.
It looked like it yesterday.
Yeah, yeah.
It still looks like that.
Yeah, it still looks like that.
Yeah.
Hasn't changed, that's why I asked.
No one moved in.
Jeff?
I just wanna clarify, you said no site work, but yet, earlier in your statement, you said you're taking out, redoing the loading dock, adding fences, so you do have site work.
So is the trash enclosure?
Right, it's the one on the side that's been removed, that's no longer.
We're just replacing with a brand-new one, as we're.
Um, and to clarify that point, what, um, I would consider the, the replacement of the existing structure there to be more of like a building repair? Which is, I just wanted to understand, because you were talking about redoing the loading dock, so I'm thinking you're digging out, you're excavating, whatnot, I just wanna clarify, because the pictures do show still the shed on the side, which is no longer there. Hydro, it's all been torn down, cleaned out. Right, so it'd just be to replace the.
Trash enclosure, it's not really a loading dock.
Yeah.
Uh, any, can you weigh in at all on an ADA spot and a, and a?
One definitely could fit on the front, right next to the crosswalk, um, there is plenty of room, there's, between the curb line and the property line, there's twelve or fourteen feet, so you could do one very similar to what was done on Main Street, where you have the parallel parking spot with the five-foot hatched on the backside, and then you build the ramp up onto the same area where the ramp is now, um, by the fire hydrant, so it could be, one could be definitely placed there, and it would serve not just this business, but other businesses and homes in the area. I would also mention that the staff had mentioned not just placing a sign to not, to, for the sidewalk, but actually replacing the ADA panels at the ramps and everything to make sure it's in compliance with current ADA at the crosswalks.
So is there an opportunity to park, have a handicap spot on Linden Street? So is there opportunity to park, have a handicap spot on Linden Street?
It would be more difficult because you have no sidewalk area. I mean, you have no space for that hatched area. The whole point of the hatched area is so if you get someone who needs a mobility device and has the ramp that comes outside, it gives that extra space. You can either pull into the hatch if you're getting out the driver's side, or you can park in the roadside and use the hatched area to open up. And then, like I say, you provide a ramp up onto the sidewalk in that area. And then you could utilize the crosswalk to go toward Washington Street Cafe, you could go to the pizzeria, although the pizzeria, I understand, does have steps, so there's a certain amount of inaccessibility to that building, but certainly, you know, someone could still be helped.
Okay. He didn't stay at a Holiday Inn Express last night, he actually does this for a living, so.
May I, may I, I don't want, not necessarily respond, but to just give the board a little bit of information that may or may not know. Concord does have an ordinance that authorizes the Director of Public Works. I know we call it General Services, but the ordinance is written, identifies public works, and gives that individual the authority to effectively grant a license to a property owner to designate a spot as handicap. As a matter of practice and course, Concord does not utilize that provision. And instead, Concord has its Parking Committee, which will accept a recommendation, or, or accept an application for a recommendation to the City Council, which ultimately has the authority to approve or disapprove the designation of a handicap spot. And I just point that out to the board, because that, such a requirement, is something that's beyond the applicant's control. So, thank you.
Yep. Okay, any other questions from the board? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? Yes? Nope. Should I step back? Somebody's on...
Thank you.
Somebody needs to silent.
Sign in.
Your phone's ringing.
I decided not to answer.
You decided not to answer?
Good evening. I will try to keep this brief. William Warren of Donahue, Topron, Chindela. I am here representing abutters Paul and Leslie Savage. I did submit two letters to the board yesterday. One was actually written by Mr. and Mrs. Savage. For purposes of saving some time, I will not address that letter this evening, but we do request that the board take it into consideration. And of course, I'm happy to address any questions that the board may have about that letter. I'm here primarily to address the ZBA appeal that was filed with Mayor Matt County Superior Court. It was filed on Monday, the nineteenth. The court is still pending service documents, so they've not actually been served on the city yet. But we are just waiting for that at this point. I would like to acknowledge that Attorney Mokel is absolutely correct, that the ZBA appeal has no statutory stay on the Planning Board proceedings. I think it is important for the board to consider, however, that from an appellate perspective, as opposed to proceedings here, the ZBA appeal means that the ZBA's decisions granting variances to the applicant from provisions of the zoning ordinance is not final inasmuch as those decisions, the variances themselves, could still be vacated by the Superior Court or by the Supreme Court, should a Supreme Court appeal become necessary. And so that is actually what Mr. and Mrs. Savage have requested of the court, which is to vacate these ZBA decisions such that the variances would no longer be in effect. And the reason I think that has some bearing on the Planning Board proceedings is that in order to obtain a conditional use permit, the applicant needs to establish that the proposed use is consistent with the terms of the zoning ordinance. In this case, the proposed use is a restaurant, and ordinarily, a restaurant will be required to provide off-street parking, off-street handicap parking, off-street loading for refuse containers. And so in this case, the applicant doesn't have space on the property to provide those features. And so in order to comply with the zoning ordinance, in order to comply with the requirements for a conditional use permit, the applicant really does need those variances in place. And so our concern on this discrete issue is that if the Planning Board were to grant a conditional use permit for this use, and then the court were to vacate those variances such that they are no longer in effect or applicable to the property, it would place the city in an awkward position in terms of code enforcement, and similarly for abutters, to the extent they're seek to enforce the city's codes. Because the applicant would essentially, at that point, have a conditional use permit for a use that is not actually permitted under the terms of the zoning ordinance. And so Mr. and Mrs. Savage feel that granting a conditional use permit before the ZBA appeal at Superior Court has been resolved is essentially putting the cart before the horse in this instance. And so we have requested that the board table its consideration, or at least its decision, on the conditional use permit application until such time as the zoning board appeal has been resolved. In the alternative, I understand, for, for time management purposes, it might be more effective for the board to deliberate and make a decision on this application this evening. And in that case, we would request that, rather than granting the conditional use permit application unconditionally, conditioning that permit on the ZBA appeal being resolved in the city's favor. That way, should the court vacate the ZBA decision, the variances, it would have the effect of invalidating the conditional use permit also. And so the city and the abutters, again, would not be in that position of having a property here with, with the required conditional use permit, but without actual approval from the ZBA for these variances that are required. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Just a question on precedent, and I don't know if anybody here can answer that, in terms of what he's, what he's suggesting, is that we make our decision subject to ZBA's court litigation issues. So is there a precedent for that, to do that?
Staff made a similar recommendation in the, in the email that was forwarded out to the board, that that is exactly what you should be doing. You should condition the approval on the court upholding the ZBA's decision.
Thank you.
Yep. And I believe there is precedent in the past for it as well. Good, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comments about this application?
Can you sign in, sir?
Sir, whoops.
Can you sign in?
I apologize.
No, fine. Thank you very much.
I can't see. Any other comments, questions, or concerns? No? Anything else from the applicant? Good from the applicant? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, and again, I, I think, like I mentioned when the, when the folks were up here testifying, you know, this is a ZBA issue more than it is a conditional use permit issue for us. I mean, we see these a lot. It is a restaurant use in the commercial neighborhood district, no, no site work. I have, I do have a question about the ADA compliant parking, and I, I don't know if we can just make a note to have staff look into that a little bit further, as far as options for putting a, an ADA spot in there?
Oh, I'm not sure the...
I don't know if we have the precedent, I don't know if we have the power to do that or not.
Sure, no, I mean, I mean, the board can, you know, craft a letter saying, excuse me, Parking Committee, can you reevaluate the decision? We think it was a great idea. I, I don't know why, I mean, maybe the applicant knows why the Parking Committee did not grant that. I, I don't know what their reasoning was. But the board can certainly, you know, ask for, you know, have a correspondence with the back committee.
Not as a condition of approval.
I wouldn't do it as a condition of approval, because the applicant's, right, they have no control over that.
That's right.
And, and I do not know the story, because I was not at that Parking Committee meeting.
Any other comment?
I looked up Vinnie's Pizzeria, seems to be in the same zone.
Yeah.
It has no parking.
Right. And, and... There's houses around.
Having lived in that neighborhood for a long time, went there a lot.
Eating a lot of pizza?
Yeah.
Every, every restaurant on Main Street.
And I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a handicap spot there either, if I'm not mistaken, up on West Street or down...
But I don't believe that building is handicap accessible anyway.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board? No staff comments? Would someone like to make a motion to, help me out here, Bob, being your best...
The CUP, subject to the condition...
Grant the conditional use approval subject to...
The condition that the, the court upholds the ZBA's decision.
Okay.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Jeff?
Just want to clarify, are we taking the staff comments from engineering, that they will provide all those items?
Um, you know what? You're making a good point, because my report actually only says, grant the CUP, so, subject to also the condition that the staff comments are addressed. All staff comments are addressed. Thank you.
So two conditions, one being the resolution of the pending zoning appeal, and the staff comments that are found on page two of the, of the, of the plan. So we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set. Thank you very much for your testimony. Good luck with the project. Moves us on to eight C in our agenda, if we could read that into the record.
Robert Deegan, LS, on behalf of Brett Halsey at 444 Josiah Bartlett Road, and Cyril and Max and Halsey and David and Cheryl Pearl at 442 Josiah Bartlett Road, requesting a minor subdivision for a lotline adjustment between their two properties in the medium-density district. Staff recommends the application be determined complete, not the development of regional impact, and to open the public hearing.
Okay, so staff has found the application complete, not a development of regional impact. Someone like to make a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
Motion has been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That motion carries. If we could get a staff update on this project?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward. It really is a very minor lotline adjustment. However, I noted on the plan that it's not clear, that the, the location of the driveway is not, not mentioned from the property line, so we just asked them to, you know, make that revision to document that that does comply with zoning, that is a zoning requirement, that they have to meet that setback, which I believe is only five feet. So that's really the only comment that we have, other than technical comments that should not be challenged to address.
Okay. Welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Good evening, I'm Robert Deegan.
Push that back a little bit.
Sorry. This is good. My name's Robert Deegan, I'm a land surveyor. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, Brett Halsey, and his siblings and parents at 442. I don't believe any of them were able to make it this evening due to a scheduling conflict, and I believe a COVID situation, but anyways.
Appreciate the mic.
So a, as Heather stated, it's a pretty straightforward application. The property was subdivided in 2009, I believe, by, what's his name, Webb Stout. So I basically reproduced his boundary, made sure all his pins were in, and drew a small adjustment to the line. To Heather's point about the driveway, I will need to make a small tweak to that line. I, I double-checked that, and it's in fact four feet and change to the edge of the driveway, so I'll, I'll have to scoot it over three-quarters of a foot, tweak the angle a little bit to keep the lot areas the same. But that's a pretty minor change that should take, you know, five minutes' draft and to hammer out.
Okay, I think that was the only technical comment, right?
I believe so. Your email, Heather, mentioned something about comments from engineering. Were, were there any?
No.
Okay.
There you go, lucky you. Okay, any questions to this applicant? Jeff?
I do. In your application, you state this is for a future garage. Have you somewhat laid out that, such that you know that it won't need a variance in the future?
Yes.
That'd be my biggest concern. You're coming in now, and hate to have to have you come back and go do this whole thing again after spending all the money.
No. No, he gave me dimensions of his proposed construction. I don't think he has it quite final-final, but he wants to put, like, a large garage on the, we don't have the plan up here, but if, if you have it on your screen, on the right side of the house at 444, where, where the driveway comes up, I mean, he's looking to, oh, do we have it?
Just want to make sure. Heather, what is the side yard setback to that structure? What would it be required?
I believe it's fifteen feet.
It should say on the report.
Fifteen on the sides, twenty-five on the...
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Thank you, Chairman.
All right. I missed that. Yeah, I just want to make sure, I just, like I said, hate to have us approve this tonight. We're moving a lotline, and then four months from now, they come back and need a variance, and we're back, if we can fix it or work with it now.
I believe if he wanted a two-car garage, he wouldn't even need the adjustment, but he wanted to build something a little bigger, so. I, I believe the gentleman has like a landscaping trailer or something he'd like to store in there.
All righty, any other questions? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? No? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you for your testimony. Before us, we've got the waivers. So four-point-one in your packet is to grant the waivers from the following sections of the subdivision, and those are outlined. I'm not going to read them. Wetlands, topography, soils, septic systems, tabulation support, and sizable area rectangles. Would someone like to make a motion to grant those waivers as outlined?
So move.
Second.
Motion's made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Four-point-two is to grant minor subdivision approval for the lotline adjustment between 444 Josiah Bartlett Drive, Josiah Bartlett Road, and 442 Josiah Bartlett Road, subject to the following conditions, and those are outlined in conditions one through seven. Would someone like to make a motion to grant that minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So move. Second.
Motion has been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set.
Can, can I ask a follow-up question on that?
Sure. Too late. No, no kidding, I'm not kidding. Go ahead.
The staff report that I got listed tabulations as a condition of approval, but tabulations was also in the waiver request.
Tabulations, Heather?
Hold on, let me, I think that was a, I was questioning that when I was writing the report.
Twelve oh three twenty-three, grant waivers, four-point-one.
Where, where does it say tabulations in the conditions of approval?
Four-point-one.
So four-point-one is to grant the waivers for the tabulations.
All right.
Which you requested a waiver, and so that's, that's the recommendation, is to grant the waiver. So four-point-one says, grant the waivers from the following, and then it lists all the things that you have.
Where was the comment about the driveway? Yeah, section three, three-point-two says, please include existing and proposed buildable area. So I, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't a, a conflict there.
Yeah, so propose an existing buildable area, just to confirm that they're, that whether they are or not changing. Yeah, so, uh, propose an existing buildable area just to confirm that they're, that whether they are or not changing? I mean, you said you had the, the proposed gross area, um, so I thought that would be valuable information. So, yeah, we're not asking for tabul- all of the tabulations to be in, in a graphic form. But I had suggested that you provide the existing and proposed buildable area. I figured that would be a...
If, if I'm not mistaken, buildable area is determined by topography, at least in part.
Correct.
So, I'm requesting waiver from topography, but I can't calculate the building area without topography.
You couldn't use the previous survey data, I imagine?
I don't have the topographic records. All I have is the recorded plan.
Okay, so, um...
I mean, I can't imagine if, if you look at the property...
I don't think it's problematic. I, I think it was something that I thought would be fairly simple for them, for him to provide, but if it's not, I'm not averse to striking that, um, comment.
Stripping the comment for a tabulation support?
Yeah, of the existing and proposed building, buildable area. So, in other words, we would, uh, grant the approval, well, we already granted the approval.
With the waivers.
So, this says, address technical review comments to the satisfaction of the planning division, which is us.
That's after the fact.
So...
Okay.
So, we'll address it to our satisfaction.
Very good.
Okay.
No changes needed.
Let the record reapply.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you sign in?
I did.
Okay, if we could, uh, hey, good job, Jeff. If we could read item, uh, what are we up to, eight D? On behalf, either the record?
Yes, Ty and Bond Incorporated on behalf of Eversource, requesting minor site plan approval for construction of a gravel access road and pad site, and conditional use permit approval for the utility use at Garvins Falls Road in the office park performance and medium density districts. Staff recommends the application be determined complete, not a development of regional impact, and to open the public hearing.
Okay, so staff has found the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and recommends opening public hearing. Someone like to make a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. If we could get a staff update on this project?
Um, sure, it's pretty simple. They just need to, um, provide access for mobile units. I'm sure they'll explain it to you. They're requesting a couple waivers, which Steph is recommending. Um, we worked through some, um, design revisions, and I can't recall if the plan that you have still shows a ninety-foot wide driveway, but that is being reduced to a normal twenty-four-foot opening, and that's just for turning radius when the trucks are coming. And our solution was that they would just apply for temporary construction access when they need to enter the site. So, it's going to be a normal-sized driveway. That'll be in the revised final plans that they submit.
Ninety-foot driveway?
The, um, the...
Because of the radius.
The radius.
Oh, okay.
It's a temporary. Not the whole driveway, just the opening at the curb cut.
Okay, welcome to the table. If you could state your names for the record?
Hi, Alex Heller with Ty and Bond. Eversource.
Ian Murphy, Eversource Project Manager.
Kurt Nelson, Licensing and Permiting Specialist with Eversource.
Great, welcome to the table. If you could tell us a little bit about your project?
Uh, the project is to support a major overhaul at the adjacent Bowe facility, where they don't have space for a mobile substation to be, uh, onsite to provide power during the major overhaul of, uh, construction period. So, we are, we picked this site, uh, to, uh, attach to the, um, the overhead lines and install a sixteen-foot wide gravel road and, um, a hundred-foot by sixty-foot gravel pad, which it will be fenced in to support the, um, mobile transformer unit to, uh, connect to the overhead line in that area. Uh, we, as part of this, we are applying for a conditional use permit, um, to have this use in the where the site's split between a residential, uh, medium, medium-density residential district and the, uh, the OFP district, which, um, is allowed by right, but the residential is, uh, district is why we are applying for the conditional use permit, which is allowable by conditional use permit by the ordinance. And the, uh, there's, uh, two waiver requests that we're, uh, requiring, which would be the, um, the, uh, plan certification for the survey. We're using, uh, publicly available LiDAR data, which is representative of, of the site enough to the point of the proposed work. And, uh, the project parcel, uh, the other waiver is to request, uh, the, the waiver for the, uh, showing the entire site, which is a fifty-acre site, and we're only disturbing, uh, less than a quarter acre of that. So, we didn't, it wasn't applicable to this project.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the board regarding this application? Jeff?
I have two. You talk of a six-inch-high oil containment berm? And I noticed from your contours that the site basically slopes from the north to the south. If you had an oil spill and all of it is going to that lower southern corner, six inches is going to be high enough to contain the oil, keep it from spilling over. If you had a flat site, six inches might be fine, but you've got almost two feet of elevation difference from the northern corner to the southern, so the oil would all pool up on one side. So theoretically, it's six high enough. Second is, I'm just kind of concerned you're doing gravel base, not asphalt or some other material that's impermeable. So, if this oil does have, I know it's rare occasion that it could happen, but if it does, is it going to get down into the ground, seep, continue to seep down, and now we've got a major out, issue out there rather than if you had some sort of barrier that you're scraping off the top rather than having to chase it deeper into the ground? So, I didn't know if that had been considered at all.
Question?
Uh, th- this site does follow the, uh, Eversource typical, uh, uh, safety protocols, and that is a, a typical, uh, substation, so we can, if there's any, um, uh, additional uh, safety requirements that aren't incorporated into this, we can certainly review that and, um, propose that.
Right, yeah, I guess, um, the, uh, so this is, this, uh, mobile yard is for temporary usage. It's in the event, for exam- this is, there's a need, uh, 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 current need identified, uh, as Alex stated, for a project that's happening over in Bowe. And it was also identified that this, um, location would, would serve a purpose in the future for, uh, situations when there was maintenance or, um, for outage recovery events, that sort of thing. In order to meet the, as you, as you stated, in, in order to meet the stormwater design standards, we do have to have that pitch that way. Uh, we do have, our gravel base is the standard for most, uh, for all of our substation, uh, properties. We don't have any paved. But that being said, um, we can institute spill, above-ground spill containment as a temporary measure when the mobile is, uh, situated in the, in the yard, which I say, which again is on a temporary basis.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Follow-up to that now, is that a membrane base of if there's any leakage or is it just the wall? Explain the, the, what you just talked about.
Right, so the, basically what I'm describing is there is, there's a means to put a, uh, like a, a, above-grade membrane with curbing around it that would have the volume necessary to contain an oil spill.
And the gravel goes over that or that goes on top of the gravel?
No, this would be on top of the gravel base. Yep.
Alright, thank you.
And just for us uneducated ones, you're, you're not talking about oil from the truck. You're talking about oil that's in the transformers or oil that's in the actual electrical units, so large, large quantities of oil.
Large oil, yeah, large quantities of mineral oil, dielectric fluid.
Guess I'm not that uneducated, I guess.
It was a good question.
Cut myself, cut myself a little slack.
Much more benign than the old days. This is, you know, PCVs have been phased out for quite a while, so.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? I thought they were all here for you guys. Okay, thank you very much for your testimony. Uh, close the public hearing and look to the board for recommendations, uh, three point one in our packet to grant the following waiver requests using, uh, criteria RSA six seventy-four forty-four three E one as guidance, and that outlines section twelve oh three one, which is plan certification not, uh, to have a Hampshire licensed land surveyor prepare, sign, and seal the existing conditions plan, and then a large parcels, uh, waiver for section fifteen oh six six. Someone like to make a motion to grant those waiver requests as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Uh, grant conditional use permit in accordance with Article twenty-eight two dash four C. Use this permit, uh, by CUP zoning ordinance to allow for the use of essential public utilities within the medium-density residential district. Would someone like to grant that conditional use permit as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and three point three is to grant minor site plan approval for the construction of the gravel pad and access driveway for a mobile substation to be used by Eversource on Garvins Falls Road, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and that's outlined in precedent conditions A one and two, and subsequent conditions one, uh, just subsequent conditions one. Uh, yes.
Question, uh, the conversation we just had about the membrane?
Yes.
Where would that go in here?
Yeah, would that be a, uh...
Subsequent condition?
Subsequent condition of a, an oil retention membrane will be used when the mobile unit is, is, is active on-site?
How about that? Be amenable to that.
Is that okay? Alright, so we'll put that in a subsequent condition two. You made a comment about, uh, emergency use or down-the-road type use. So, you do this conversion over, you, you, you use it there while this is done. Five years down the road, you might, you might need to come back, so the, the, the location will be locked off, I imagine, and, and secured, and off you go.
Correct.
And then you come back when you need it.
And the mobile unit itself is removed?
Is removed, yeah, so there'll be nothing there but a pad.
It'll be an open, yep.
Okay.
I have a suggestion that, uh, that they, that a, a condition be that they add a note to the plan indicating all of that stuff, so that the plan actually states that for the record.
Okay.
Because our report may end up, who knows where our report may end up?
Good point. We like to think that it doesn't, but it might.
Put it on the plan, and then it'll be there forever.
Put it on the plan, okay, you got that?
Yes.
Okay, so there've been a couple of changes in there. Uh, we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion on that?
Do we have a motion and second?
Do we have a motion and a second to grant minor subdivision approval as outlined?
I think we did on the conditional use.
Uh, we stopped because Counsel Pierce interrupted us. Thank you, okay. So, we've added subsequent condition two, uh, and note that it will be put on the plan. Would someone like to make a motion to grant minor si- site plan approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Good luck, thank you. You're all set.
Thank you very much.
Sorry, Earl. Both wheels of the bus just hit you. Alright, moves us on to eight D on our agenda. If we could read that into the record?
Wilcox and Barton Incorporated on behalf of Calvert Ridge Six LLC, requesting minor site plan approval for additional parking area at fifty-two Loop Road in the open space residential district. Staff recommends the application be determined complete, not a development of regional impact, and to open the public hearing.
Okay, so staff has found the application complete, not a development of regional impact. Would someone like to make a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and we will open the public hearing. Uh, if we could get a quick staff update on this project?
Um, sure, so this is in, um, response to, this project was approved several years ago. It's been in operation, and their parking need is larger than what our minimum requirements are for the zoning ordinance. So, people have been parking on the lawn. So, after speaking with, um, or dealing with code enforcement office, the solution is to provide this larger parking area. So, that's what they're before you tonight. The only staff recommendation is, because our ordinance says landscaping is only required if the zoning ordinance requires more than ten parking spaces, even though they're providing more than ten, they're not required, so it doesn't trigger it. Steph is still recommending that they meet the landscaping requirements, um, for that area.
I can attest to that, as I drive by that quite often, and it is a lot of, a lot of cars on that side lot. Okay, uh, welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Thank you, I'm Cynthia Taria with Wilcox and Barton.
Great, uh, tell us a little bit about this. I think we got a pretty good idea of what you need, if you can just fill in some blanks for us and go from there.
Sure, absolutely. Do you want me to pull the plan up?
Yeah, you should be able to get to it through the agenda on the...
Here?
Yep.
Okay. Um, the project is on Loop Road, at fifty-two Loop Road, which is at the intersection of Hopkinton Road. And, um, as mentioned, it's an existing building, um, and business on the property. And the proposal is to expand the parking area to accommodate their use and fix the drainage issues that they have in front of the garage and, um, add some screening as requested by the Butters, to help keep the site more in line with the residential neighborhood. Um, that's basically the, the project.
Okay. Uh, questions from the board? So, take us through the proposed screening. What are we putting in for, for screening from the street?
Sure, so the idea is to add bushes, um, let me see. Are they are providing, I can't, I'm sorry, I can't see.
They're proposing spruce trees.
Spruce trees.
Spruce trees along up to, uh, Hopkinton Road, right on that corner, is that what I'm looking at? One, two, three, four, five, six of them?
Yes, that's correct.
So, and again, as I, as I drive up from Concord headed north on Ho- Hopkinton Road, it's very apparent as you come, and you can see the property on your right-hand side. Is there any way to, what, what's over on the right-hand side of the driveway that comes in here? Is there any opportunity to, to add some more screening on that side? There's an oak and a maple there now, a sixteen-inch oak and an eight-inch maple. Is there anything underneath that? Or maybe I'm just imagining it, but it seems like I can, it, it, there's a lot of space there when I wa- when I drive by.
Do we have the, the photos?
Nothing.
Photos on the site too?
What's that?
It's all grass from the lawn.
It's all grass, yeah.
I think this area here is all grass, right? This middle area is all grass. There's a couple of trees up here, and then there's a couple of trees here. Maybe there's one over here. It looks like there's one over here too.
Counsel Pierce?
I have a history question.
Yep.
Back when we approved this several years ago, wasn't the original plan to put a fence in?
Yeah.
And the Butters didn't want it? Okay, this is the same property?
I think so, yeah. Yes.
Okay.
But the fence wasn't along the front edge. I believe it was around the...
Right, yeah.
It was in a different location.
Gotcha, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Suzanne?
Um, I can't tell, um, from this drawing, what are they, about ten feet apart?
I think so, yeah.
So, maybe, um, in between, they could do like some shrubs or something to fill in, or just stagger them a little more?
I don't think it's as visible from this, if you're headed south or you're headed whatever, into Concord from Hopkinton, it doesn't seem to be as visible when you're driving by as it is coming the other way. When you come the other way, you really, you really can see it.
So, you're talking up closer to the parking?
Oh, I know, I, you can see it, I guess, yeah, both ways.
It's pretty wide open, and I think, is it more the Butters across the street, not so much the roadway? Because I think you mentioned it was the Butters' request.
Yeah.
Do you think the screen should just be closer to the parking area?
Yeah, I do.
Well, they, yeah, so one of the recommendations was to add more plantings around the parking area, so that would also screen it.
Yeah.
If, if the board supports staff's recommendation for adding more plants around the parking.
I haven't gotten that far as staff recommendation.
But that might be, that might help a little bit with the screening of the parking area. But yeah, Jose just measured, they're about eleven feet apart, so yeah.
And it doesn't have to, if that's evergreen, it doesn't have to be evergreen around the parking. It could just be dense.
It could be shade trees, yeah. Shade trees or shrubs. Yeah, we're recommending shade trees and then...
Right, because they have the parking and they're not required, yeah.
But then we could add shrubs to that requirement as well, if you would like.
So, there's parking there now? Or it's just park at your, there's no formal parking area over there, right?
It's a great, there's a driveway and, um, dirt.
Pull on the dirt, right?
Essentially.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
Is this, um, business growing?
No, there's eight beds in there. There's, to remain, eight beds.
So, it's just shift changes and, yeah, visitors? Yeah. Okay, any member of the audience have any questions or concerns about this application? No? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you very... Yes, sorry.
One thing I saw in the plan, you're proposing permeable pavement. Are you proposing an O and M maintenance?
Yes, engineering has requested.
And you're acceptable?
Uh, no, we requested it.
Oh, you requested, okay, good. As long as that's there, I just want to make sure, because if you don't clean it two years down the line, it's not going to work, and you're going to have your puddle in the garage again. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, we will close the public hearing. Thank you for your testimony. In your packet, we have, uh, recommendation three point one is to grant the minor site plan approval for the site improvements of fifty-two Light Loop Road, subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in your packet of precedent conditions one and two, and subsequent condition through one. Would someone like to make a motion to approve?
Sorry, do you want to add in there, so in my recommendation for additional landscaping, I just requested shade trees? But if you want to supplement that to be shrubs?
If we can, if we can just, yeah, I mean, if we can maybe say work with staff to add more shrubs and plantings in near the parking area, that would be great. Okay, should we add that as a subsequent condition, so two?
Well...
Or just?
It's under one, it's covered under the plan and review plan, so, yep.
So, would someone like to make a motion to grant that minor site plan approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Jeff, did I miss you open it up to comments from public?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Yep.
Said, any comment, any comments from the public, and looked around. I didn't see anybody raise their hand, sorry. Did you have any comments?
Yeah, I actually did.
Oh, come on up.
You opened the public...
So, we'll, uh, I don't know, this is odd, yeah, this is unusual.
It's...
It's, well, I'm going to leave the public hearing closed, but I'd like to hear what you got to say. If you could state your names to the record?
Yeah, Glenn Gagny, one oh seven Hopkinton Road, right across the street. This Paul Levy.
Okay.
So, I'm great with this, should have been part of the original, obviously. I don't disagree with you being a little more line of sight when you're coming up from Concord.
Yeah.
But being directly across, to me, the need for the landscaping isn't just about not being able to see it. It's, the reason why there are so many cars there is, they also have other facilities in the state, and they utilize this as kind of a teaching for when they have employees that are being hired. They shadow the employees here, so that's kind of why there's a little bit more cars here than just the normal staff that they actually need to operate. With the shift changes and everything, it's like a commercial parking lot where you get the horns going off for the cars every now and then because an alarm's going off, people are beeping there. You know, things shut at eleven, twelve o'clock at night. So as much as that little bit of screaming that they're proposing might kind of block it a little bit, I don't think it's really going to necessarily help with the noise. I'd actually like to see much more screening across, you know, kind of a real buffer between the houses across the street and, you know, this parking area. Because they have, you know, when their employees get out, they often are talking to each other, and this can be at eleven, twelve o'clock at night. It's very rare do they get company, so to speak. These are just the employees coming and going. Other than that, I think it's great. I like that they are moving the dumpster from the end of this over to the other side, much more appropriate. They've put up some fencing to help contain what they consider their charges at the property. I wish, if anybody remembers this property, when the Snows owned it, and they came before the board for their approvals for the excavating equipment, they kept this place monaculous, you know. If you went by recently, they just mowed the area where they want to do the parking area, but it hasn't been mowed all summer. It's been more of a field. The same with the front lawn, irrigation was nice green front lawn. Now we've got nothing but a little bit of dirt and some weeds. They don't have their maintenance come too often, so I can be a little worried when you're talking about landscaping and plantings and so forth because it's, you know, it's not maintained the yard area now. So I would hope that you're doing plantings, and this plan actually indicated these were going to be white spruce, not varieties or anything like that. And I don't know if you are aware, white spruce trees tend to clutter things underneath them. Grass grows tall, the garbage collects underneath. So I do have my concerns with respect to that, so I would ask that maybe, you know, the landscaping be more something that's going, give a better buffer and more substantial, and, you know, maybe not something that needs a lot of maintaining because they're just not maintaining anything over there.
Okay. Fair enough. Yeah, if you could state, if you could just sign in, that'd be great.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of order.
Yep.
We've already approved this.
Right, I just wanted to hear the comments regarding the landscaping.
I just wondered if we should open the public hearing again to get this information on the record? Or, this is new to me, so I don't know what the procedure is.
I mean, the board's already made a motion.
So I think we can...
So I would, I would consider it...
It's a closed matter of staff.
Yeah.
I mean, it's in line with recommendations that were already made.
Right, right. And again, I think the recommendation to work with staff on the appropriate level of screening is valid.
I think it's the chair's...
I just want to hear if there's comments.
He gave the courtesy to do that.
Okay.
Did you want to add to that, Mr. Levy?
Not much. Mostly, I live down Loop Road, and I'm not in a Butter. The people right at that intersection are the ones most affected, and our neighborhood tries to support the various concerns. There have been a number of concerns with this, with this property, and we've, so I, as a neighbor, I'm supporting Glenn's comments and concerns. You know, generally, we want this place to fit in to a residential neighborhood as much as possible. And a large parking lot doesn't, and screening it, you know, begins to help a great deal. So the better that screening can be, certainly, the more we'd appreciate it.
Great, thank you for your testimony. And again, sorry, a quick gavel, I guess. And you got the feedback, and we'll work with staff on the level. Great, thank you. Okay, let's move on on our agenda. Eight F into the record, if we could.
TF Moran Incorporated on behalf of Interchange Development LLC requesting a preliminary design review for a mix of uses, including urgent care, medical office, retail, and restaurant for property off Whitney Road in the Gateway Performance District. Staff does recommend, well, this is not a formal site plan application, I don't know if we do a... We do. We do recommend it be determined complete. We also recommend that it be determined development of regional impact. We have notified our PCU and that you open the public hearing.
Okay, so there is a determination completeness component?
For design review.
Okay, for design review as well as finding the application a development of regional impact and open the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, and all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, the public hearing is open. Let's get a quick staff update on this, and we'll welcome you up to the table. Come on up. If we could get an update from staff, that would be great.
Sure, this is just, this is the next phase, phase two. They were before you back in May for the driveway cuts discussion. So that's that area over there that's in question. They've incorporated several of those comments that staff did bring up during the earlier discussion. And staff still has some circulation concerns, but they've worked through a lot of stuff. But this is for you all to provide them comments before they submit their site plan review as well.
Perfect.
Sorry, I'm inquisitive tonight. Reading through this in the second time tonight, I've heard it. A driveway being too wide, I understand the ninety feet that we had prior to this, but what's wrong with, educate me, what's wrong with a driveway being too wide?
For pedestrians. So if you're crossing a street and you're crossing a fifty-foot driveway, there's no refuge.
Thank you.
I was going to answer that, but I let Beth.
I'll let you go next time, for a start.
Welcome to the table. If we could state your names to the record?
Jason Hill with TF Moran.
Laurie Rossio with Interchange Development.
Great, well, welcome back. Project's looking like, looking, looking great.
Yes, we've done a lot since May.
We have.
If you've been in the area, you might have noticed that the Market Basket is now open for business.
Really? It's open?
It is way open, I haven't been there.
I had not heard that it's open, I'm only kidding, of course I've heard that it's open. Everybody knows it's open.
There are some that haven't heard.
Everybody knows it's open.
And then Hampshire State Liquor Store is also open. So we're here tonight for the design review. This is kind of unusual, but today's paper, there was a very, actually really nice succinct summary of what's going on. Fairly accurate.
It was a succinct summary, and it was, I thought it was fairly accurate.
So kudos to the monitor, the listening.
That's one.
So tonight, you know, we're just here to get some comments from, from all of you on this, the current design that we have laid out, the overall concept. What we're just showing you here is a recent aerial, we just took this today. It wasn't very sunny at the time we took this aerial, but just shows you Market Basket in the background, the liquor store closer in. Up near the smaller roundabout is Wendy's, which is under construction, and they're waiting on some siding. Otherwise, they'd be further along. And then just behind the Wendy's is the foundation for the four-to-eight Merchant's Way project, which you approved back in the winter, in the winter, excuse me, which has the Service Credit Union and Jersey Mike's as the initial tenants in that plaza. The global gas station out front is currently closed for renovations. They're still doing gas, but you can see there's some trucks and trailers out front there because they're actually doing a full renovation of the store. Would have been a lot better had they done that while we were under construction up at the roundabout, but that's, that's how it works. So the roundabouts are looking really good. As you can see, the small roundabout is fully functional. The two-lane roundabout, if you scroll over, is still operating as a single-lane roundabout on Route Four. The city has some additional, I think some striping that they wanted to do. And I'm not exactly sure why we're still on one lane, but they'll, well, they'll get there.
The signage.
The signage, right. Well, I thought we had a temporary signage plan that was going to allow the two-lane roundabout to open, but it's not. So, so it is what it is, and it gives some people time to practice, you know, as one lane, before it opens up as two. And obviously, there's no landscaping in either roundabout yet. The city has got that next up, and do the next. So this slide, this aerial is looking in the other direction, so over Market Basket and heading towards, towards the west. So the, the open field is the area that we'll be talking about this evening, starting at the bus stop and heading over to the west towards Whitney Road. So that's generally the area that we're focused on this evening. The plan set that was provided to you by TF Moran is very similar to the CDP that you've seen in the past, but the plan set has more details in grading and drainage, and you can kind of think of it as a preliminary site plan. We obviously will take into consideration all the comments from planning and engineering, and come back with a more detailed, probably much larger plan set, lots of sheets to cover all of the details of the, of the design. The main difference between this plan and what you saw in May is the grid formation, which the staff had asked for, so that as you're, if you're coming into the central part of the site off of Merchant's Way, you can enter one of the driveways and then kind of cut through over to Interchange Drive and branch out from there. So it creates a more of a grid format. We tucked the loading dock in behind the larger retail. We made sure that, Jason, you're coloring. We rearranged the Concord, sorry, the urgent care area. Down in the corner to make sure that they have full access for fire trucks. There's still some work to be done, for sure. You know, we got to hone in on some of the details of the landscaping. And, oh, I also just wanted to mention that we also, since it is a development of regional impact, Bosquen and Canterbury have reviewed the plans, and while they didn't have any comments, Bosquen invited us to their planning board meeting in October, just for informational purposes. I guess we're a standing item on their agenda, and they would like to have us come in person and talk about what we have going on in the future phases. So we're going to do that on October fourth. So Jason, if you want to just pull up...
Won't be as much fun as this, Lori.
No, it won't be, it won't be.
Just give you a heads up.
Don't let them try to change it.
Go back up to that plan just for a sec. So if I recall right, right there, oops, right on Integrity Drive, Interchange Drive. So as I recall, there was much discussion regarding those first two buildings and the drive aisles. We reworked that one that I think goes into the hospital. It was going to loop around, if I remember right, around that first building. So anything changing as far as people movement and sidewalks? And it looks like there's two, two cuts, one on either side of that building, the, is that the hospital building and the...
The hospital is that smaller one, yeah.
And then the big, the big, the big one is just a three, a three-unit?
Yep, we have a...
Retail, we'll call it.
Large retail proposed for the big box, a smaller retail, and then the, a smaller medical unit facing the Concord Hospital.
So the back of that, the back of that one, the big retail, is that a loading dock?
Yes.
Okay, so it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a pull-in?
Depressed loading.
This way, as opposed, okay.
Correct.
Yep.
East-west.
So we did install the two driveways as we talked about, and that is the location shown on these plans. Those are the driveways that we did, that we did already put in. But obviously, we understand you guys might still want to change those, but they are in. In fact, there's two light poles sitting in each one of the driveways that were from the prior iteration of the plan, but that's okay. We can, we can move a light pole. But the initial plan that we showed you back in the spring had up to four driveways, so now we're down to, down to two. And I just want to show you, since this was the subject of conversation, do you want to show them the next, the next? Zoom out a little bit. So we talked a lot about the central green area near the restaurant, which is across from the liquor store. So we did hire BRH Architects to give us a rendering of that, of what a restaurant there with outdoor seating and a green space for pedestrians and bicyclists to hang out and have their either Jersey Mike's, Wendy's, whatever choice of restaurants that they want to have, or if they're waiting for a seat at, at the restaurant. At this stage, that's as far as we are in the concept, but we are in conversations with various end-users for the restaurant space, so hopefully, they're going to give us more guidance as to what they want to see and use in that area. But this is kind of what we're picturing.
That would be the existing liquor store.
Yes, so this is a rendering with a photo on one side and the full rendering on the other side. You can kind of see through the proposed trees, you can see the...
That's the Jersey Mike's site plan that's being constructed now. Wendy's is down below, and then as Lori mentioned, there's the big box, retail, shared parking lot, and then the restaurant with the park, open space, amenity.
Yep.
So great place for some public art right there on that little corner.
That's true.
Certainly livening up downtown, so something to think about. And that's a bus stop, right?
Yeah, that is a bus stop, it's already there. That, that's not, that's not part of the rendering, that's actually part of the picture.
Okay.
Glad to answer any questions?
Questions? Suzanne? Go ahead, Suzanne.
Now, it's, I didn't see it on the plan, but it looks like those are raised beds.
Yes, those are stone walls with raised beds inside them. We haven't gotten to that detail, but I would assume perennials of some kind, and then trees in some other areas?
Yeah, well, it, it looks very chopped up to me, and it doesn't look like the green space as you call it. I think that it looks like there's more hard landscaping.
Yeah, it's behind it, is the green, is that old?
Whatever is on the road there, I mean, that's part of the green space, I guess.
It's on the left element.
Yeah, it just seems a little chopped up, and maybe that there doesn't have to be so many small ones. And I think that the trees are going to be the most favored contribution to that space because it's so exposed.
Okay.
And, and I, I don't know if those trees are able to get below the surface, or they're going to be growing in that raised bed, which probably wouldn't be conducive to maximum growth. And the only other thing I noticed, I happened to be there, I think I was at the liquor store, and of course, I didn't even, I didn't even notice that part, but they used stone as mulch.
That's only below the liquor store roof where there's runoff. Beyond that is mulch and, and then plantings. There's no plant...
There are plantings in the stone.
It's only on the west side. Yeah, it's on, it's on that side, yeah, there's mulch.
No, the stone mulch has plants growing in it.
Right, this picture doesn't show it because it's on the other side. I know what you're talking about, it's on the west side. We didn't have room to add the mulch as well. There's a lot of water coming off the solar panels that are on that side of the building, and the outside landscape architect didn't think that they would, the mulch would survive, yeah.
The mulch would not survive?
Right, because of all the water coming off the roof.
So, and you think plants will survive?
Seem to be thriving right now.
Well, I don't know, I mean, I know there's irrigation, but that's not a good combo for plants because it's just not sustainable for the plants, because they're not, they're never going to get any of the nutrients or the, the, the water holding capacity. But it might have been better for them to either make bigger spaces, like more space rather than use stone.
Right, so...
But did you, was it spec'd out to be stone? Because I don't think we really allow stone as a mulch.
You do if it's off of the runoff, where the roof runs off. That's my understanding of the rules. It's, it's where you have runoff from the roof that would hit the mulch otherwise.
All right, well, that one's already built, so-
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, what, going forward is that-
Going for the forward, yep.
Going forward, it's like, I don't know if it's even worth-
So I'm interested in your thoughts on the raised beds and what would be a better option on those raised beds. I mean, you can't go, you can't get too big with trees because you're, you've got sightline issues and things like that. I think-
No, I think sightline issues are more related to shrubs than the trees. I think you can get beyond that. They're like the sightline issues. I think it's really important to have trees in that space. Now, maybe the trees are in the green space, and then you have the planting on the outside because, I mean, no one's going to be kicking a soccer ball in a parking lot.
The traffic, yeah.
So, I mean, maybe that's really more of a space where you could have the trees. But if you're going to go through the effort of planting them, you have to kind of look forward to is like, are these going to be things that are just going to be failing all the time, which we see all the time?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nothing's being saved in the trees that are there now. I mean, if you look at the, those are all coming out, right?
No, and in fact, this area here is already cleared.
Okay.
Yeah.
Matt?
I have one question related to this, and just a favor to ask about the little roundabout, because I don't know how to navigate it. So is this going to be like the Friendly Toast in Bedford?
That was where it was initially designed.
Yeah.
After, yes, it was-
The second one is, when I go get gas, I have to go all the way around the roundabout and then in, right? How many conflicts are, like, I don't know if there's additional, there's a lot of conflicts that seem to be people kind of cutting in the other way and then coming at each other on the side of the convenience store.
The initial plan wasn't, didn't include the roundabout, so the roundabout was added later, and the city asked us to close the first driveway to Global. So the solution was to add the entrance off of Whitney Road so that you could still get in there.
So I'm doing it correctly if I go all the way around the roundabout and-
That is the correct way to do it.
Or go behind the building.
Or go behind the building.
All right. Not everybody figured that out, I don't know.
Or get your gas on your way out. When you go to Market Basket, then get your gas. That also works.
Teresa, do you have a question?
Oh, I was just going to say, back to where you've got the raised bed, can I, oh, gosh, I was-
That's why we moved it.
Yeah, that's an intersection. You've got a restaurant there. I actually, Suzanne, am okay with those raised beds there because of kids, because I think if, you know, if you're waiting to go in the restaurant, you're at a busy intersection, so I kind of like the idea that it's blocked off and you've got the green space behind it. It seems a little safer to me.
Well, if they're going to have the little beds, I think they should connect them more into one large bed. It seems like they're like all these little islands that have all these little openings.
Yeah.
I would never look at that as being a barrier for kids to-
We could just join them, make one long, one long-
Right, but I just, I just don't think the trees are going to grow in them.
Okay, all right, something wider. Yep, or lower with trees and then a few of these in the mid-
Or benches and have them planted.
Right. Definitely could work on that.
The pedestrian.
Yeah, the pedestrian piece. So you're going to cut off people running across the street.
Out of crosswalk, you shouldn't be-
Yeah, you don't go to the crosswalk. You run across the street.
You should go to the crosswalk.
You're going to a liquor store. You go the fastest way possible, right across the street.
Sometimes you just need a drink.
Jeff, you've been waiting patiently.
Yeah, so I'm going to get more technical.
Uh, wait a minute. We're off to another question? Go ahead, Jeff.
Sure, you don't want to call in anybody else first.
Go ahead.
It's not, it's not too bad. I'm trying to keep it high level, but Sheet C5, could you bring those up on the plan?
What did he say?
Sheet C5.
C5.
It's number three in our plan set. I just, the reason I'm saying is because you show a propane tank next to the loading dock, next to the urgent care, which I believe actually might be encroaching on the sewer easement. So I just, that's one area you may want to verify before you bring the plan back before us again.
Okay.
Five.
Go up, I think it's up one more. See, you have that to the left, right on Whitney Road. You have a propane tank pad.
Okay.
I think, if I'm correct, I think the dash line right there is the edge of the sewer easement.
Okay. Yep.
So take a look at that.
Yep.
Yeah, no problem. Loading dock, have you provided turning templates on how, whatever vehicles you're proposing to get into that loading dock at the urgent care?
Not at the urgent care. That's, yeah, that's just meant to be a smaller box.
That's a dumpster. So you've got a dump, you've got a trash, you've got a trash truck that I don't believe can get in there without having to back all the way out. So that needs to be considered. Is there any requirement, fire department have access all the way around or at least three sides of a building?
Yeah, we've requested turning templates for that.
It'll be fully, it'll be fully sprinkled, so it doesn't have to go all the way around. In fact, it going all the way around is what caused the issue of adding the extra driveway, which was then, we were told not to do the driveway, so.
So those, the little island to the right there in between the curved parking spaces, nope, you're right on it, down below, right there, that little island, that doesn't appear to be 24 feet across. It's 24 feet above, but as you round that corner, it seems to tighten up. So just take a look at that.
Driveway width you're talking, Jeff?
Yeah. The, you have this wide concrete patio at the corner of this. I'm kind of, what is that for?
Probably the main entry sequence patio, per se, so-
Just an entrance.
The front door with the expanded hardscaping for potential, I don't know if you'd use it for lunch, because it's so visible.
Is that flush or is that raised because you don't have a ramp?
Right now, the design would be, yeah, the design intent will be to have a tip-down. The ADA route will extend from this point straight in. It will be detailed on the plan set, and we may refine this area to even put in some trees or shrubbery.
Okay.
It's oversized hardscape at this point, but-
That was one of the comments from staff, was to look at all the tip-downs, so we will do that.
Yep. I know we commented on this on previous plans, just off the page, that five-foot dimension, make sure that it's five feet exclusive of curb for sidewalk winds.
Yeah.
Again, I noticed that the engineering department's already commented on all the truck turns, so I'm not going to comment the fact that it goes over curb, blah, blah, et cetera. But I do note that on the drive, the driveways along interchange, you have no crosswalks. Everywhere else, we have a crosswalk across the driveway.
Oh, we can add those.
So crosswalk, push, a stop, bar back, which now with your sight distance, that's the other issues. Sightlines, when you're coming out of the driveway looking left, are looking slightly uphill through landscaping. Same with this driveway. When you look at going back through there, you're looking through parking and through landscaping.
Mm-hmm.
And I know we mentioned this meeting in May and had concerns with it.
Good, you can bring it up. Yeah, we have that, we have that plan right now. You want to take a look?
And it shows actually that you're not having landscaping or anything within the site triangles, and the parked cars are not within the site triangle.
Presentation. So, yeah, for, yeah, so under sight distance for, I haven't submitted that yet to the city, but I did have an exhibit that showed a particular case being the sightline to the west for a left-turning vehicle. Well, there's the triangle for the eastern drive, western drive, and this is stopping sight distance from a plaza, commercial plaza, talking low-speed traffic, 25 to less for posted and designed speed limits. That's subject to stopping sight distance criteria, which is, you know, roughly 160 feet for this particular case. So that would be, in this particular drive, the clear area actually excludes the parking field barely, but this curb line is the parking field of that future north or west parking, eastern parking facility. This area-
I would question two things. First of all, your farthest right-hand corner of that triangle is on the yellow line.
Yes.
Unless somebody's striding the yellow line, that's not where the car is coming down that roadway. So your line actually needs to go closer to where the driver's eye would be.
Okay.
Also, you have that whole area between the parking lot and that sidewalk landscaped.
Yeah, definitely look at how that's being treated. I understand the concern.
Because you're talking stopping sight distance now, well, this is actually an intersection sight distance diagram, because stopping sight distance is along the roadway, but you have to be able to see the two cars.
Actually, you're right. I went to the center line, but I, point taken.
Yep.
You know, we'll make sure that there's no parking or other obstruction to interfere with that criteria, and certainly provide that to Jose and his group, and all them at that point in time for evaluation.
Yep, and that's fine. Like I said, we're here for just general comment. I noticed that on the loading area for the restaurant, what you have hatched out is less than the 1,000 feet required.
That's it, that's the last one for the night. Which is this zone.
Yep, and the same thing at the quote-unquote new retail, which looks very familiar to pharmacies with the drive-through up there next to the liquor store. Same thing, that does not have a 1,000-foot loading area.
Okay.
And I know staff's already commented on the bypass lane necessity there.
Okay.
Those are probably the big items I saw that were more that can affect some of your layout.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
It's really smart to have an urgent care next to a fast-food restaurant.
And a liquor store.
And a liquor store.
Good planning. Good planning. Any other questions or comments? Remember, the audience have any questions or comments? No? Sure? I didn't miss anybody this time? No? I did ask, didn't I, last time? I'm pretty sure I did.
You did, dude.
Okay. Okay, so we'll close the public hearing. Excellent, thank you very much. You got some feedback?
Yes.
Keep up the good work and we'll see you next time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, guys.
Good evening.
Jason, you all send all that. Could you send those presentation materials too with the architect?
Oh, okay, sure. Just so we can have those.
Even though it's who recused.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, if we could, thank you very much. If we could read item 8G into the record.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recuse myself for this item.
Okay.
And I'll leave the room.
Record, Council Pierce is recusing, and we're booting him out. He's headed home.
Are you leaving?
Yeah, there's nothing else left on the agenda. H and I are done, and referral to City Council, but eh.
Yeah.
He's good to see that anyways.
Need to ride home early.
I'll see it on the flip side.
Okay, so if we could read item 8G into the record and have the applicant come on up.
TF Moran Incorporated on behalf of Big Step LLC requesting a preliminary design review for hospitality use consisting of a gaming hall and restaurant slash bar for property off of Break-A-Day Drive in the Gateway Performance District. Staff does recommend this application be determined complete. We had not previously suggested that it be determined a development of regional impact, but I believe it probably should be, DRI, and to open the public hearing.
Okay, so staff has found the application complete. We will recommend that it is a development of regional impact and open the public hearing. Someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and a development of regional impact.
So both?
Motion's made and seconded and all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We will open the public hearing. If we could get a quick staff update on this.
I will just briefly say that they came to architectural design review, and they presented their plans and their elevations, and they accepted feedback from ADR. They gave some valuable conceptual-related feedback. Otherwise, I will let them provide what is probably a much better presentation of this than I would do.
Okay, if you guys could state your names to the record.
Good evening, Nick Golen, Licensed Engineer and Principal of TF Moran.
Good evening, Andy Sanborn from, well, not technically Big Step, but Concord Commitment LLC.
And I'm Jeremiah Goulet with Banwell Architects.
Okay, so it's, again, it's a development concept plan, so we don't need too, too much detail, but a nice overview of the plan of the project would be great.
Certainly. I'm going to let Andy speak a little bit just to the intent of the project, what we're hoping to achieve, so you can understand a little bit of the vision of what we're trying to accomplish, and then Jeremiah will provide some detailed relative site design and the architecture to make sure it's consistent with expectations.
Members of the board, members of the city, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to chat tonight. For the record, again, my name is Andy Sanborn, and I wanted to start my presentation by saying how excited we are about this, but of course, I'm coming in after the exit 17 thing, so it's clearly much smaller scale than I thought. I thought I'd be comparing myself to like a small strip mall or a small industrial park and tell you about all these great things, but I was upstaged by the last presentation, but all that, I-
Could be worse. Trust me.
I appreciate that.
Trust me, you could come in after a contentious little argument of session, and we've had those, so.
Oh, jeez, Lord.
Got a nice, easy on-ramp.
Yes, well, and I appreciate that. So, you know, again, I think it's really important for me to highlight that we've put together just really an amazing team, and we're so excited to work with them, you know, from Nicholas Combs, Golen from TF Moran, who's kind of like, he's our ringleader and the whip snapper of the way this whole thing works. Banwell Architects, and Ingrid Molten and Jeremiah have done great work with helping to bring our vision to light. Ekman Construction and other local firm could not be here tonight, and they apologize for doing so, and Bill Dow was also part of our design team, who's not here tonight. Globally, what my wife Lori, and she's hiding it up back, which is where she likes to be, because that's where all bosses always end out, really think we have this exciting thing for Concord that just checks so many boxes about who we are. You know, you all in the city has really stepped up and said they want to make this section of town a gateway project, that they want to bring some level of hospitality and fun to people coming into our community, and in this section of town, there really isn't anything and hasn't anything to really highlight who we really want to be as an organization. And this project for us, as I'd said, it, you know, kind of checks so many different boxes of what's really cool and exciting about the city of Concord, and we developed something that's, at some level, is multifaceted, and I'll talk very, very briefly about the overall plan, because I know we're only here for Phase One, but trying to build something that includes a hotel, a brewery, restaurants, a event center, and charitable gaming operation all into one place when people come to town, we think really provides so many things, which I'll talk about in a quick second. Specifically, as to Phase One, because obviously, we need to build something that generates the revenue to build Phase Two and Phase Three, is our request to build a 43,000-square-foot building, and those who know, Lori and I, know that, you know, our tradition of traditionally Hampshire values, that's very important to us, and wanting to always create something that embodies who we are as a people and what we have always been. So we've envisioned trying to build a facility that ties in that traditional New Hampshire industrial age and matches the decor of what we've seen in downtown Concord. So there's this kind of symmetry of who we are. Within this, admittedly so, I'm a real history buff, and, you know, trying to create something that represents and pays homage to all the things that make New Hampshire, New Hampshire. For example, I found a line on a Concord coach, and you'll see in our design of our For example, I found a line on a Concord coach and you'll see in our design of our lobby, it's slightly oversized because it's our desire to bring a Concord coach into the facility and stack it up with, you know, all the accompanying accoutrements that pays homage to what we have done there and use our interior design to look at things from the old man of the mountain and all the things that really make us who we are and represent all those types of facets. And we believe this is a facility that's going to be, that's going to allow us to do that. But the facility itself is going to create something that we find in hospitality with good jobs with, and I'll talk about charitable gaming in a brief second, and although I'm not a guy that loves to pay a lot of taxes, a good tax base. So let me talk a little bit about charitable gaming, because I'm not sure if all of you know, and I'm happy to answer more questions if I'm covering at too high a level. You know, the state of New Hampshire started a process about thirty-five years ago to help take pressure off of local budgets and state budgets by creating a facility where people can be consultants, and that's what Lori and I are, helping nonprofits raise money for their specific projects. How this works is we carve off about thirty-five percent of our gross revenue and give it to a different charity every ten days. With advent of what we're trying to do today, it's going to allow us to help pick seventy local charities and every ten days help raise money for them. This will take pressure off of Concord City budget, of regional budgets, off the state budget. We have seen the success of these types of operations, both in the tiny little test bit that we have going on on Main Street today, where in the past two and a half years, we've raised over three quarters of a million dollars to give away to local charities. And by bringing this forward, it's going to allow us to continue to really help our community. We think that's an important aspect, because at the end of the day, you want to give back to your community and make it work for you. So I'll stop real briefly, because I know Nick has a lot to talk about and Jeremiah wants to talk about specifics that are much more detailed than I probably can. But our concept of trying to create something in Concord that brings in true hospitality, fun, someplace to go and see a concert and go to a brewery, stay if you're traveling around, and raising money for charity, I think is a pretty cool thing. So with that, let me defer to the best looking man in the room, Mr. Golen.
Thank you, Andy. Compliments aside, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and tell you a little about our project. I thought it would be opportune to first start with our location. This is three and seven Break a Day Drive, located on the east side of the city, tax map forty-six Z lot, thirty-six Z thirty-seven. On the plan that's up on the screen, you can see the site is not perfect. We have topographical issues, we have wetlands issues, and then we also have our access off of Break a Day Drive, which is not of a typical geometry, we'll say. And then also that there are some anticipated improvements to Break a Day Drive that will also be required to accommodate this development. The first item I'll point you to is the fact that all those small squiggly lines represent contours that are two-foot contours. There's a tremendous amount of grade drop on this property upwards of eighty-five feet from the northwest quadrant, located in the top left of the plan, down really to the southeast quadrant, which is located along Break a Day Drive. To the right or to the right side of the plan or to the east, you'll see there is a large wetland area. What this wetland is, is this is conveying stormwater runoff from I-393 through the property and then back into another culvert where it then goes downstream into another wetland. We have prepared a functional evaluation relative to that wetland, which shows that from a functional characteristics, it scores very, very low. We did have the opportunity to visit with the Conservation Commission to let them know about this project. And given that the area of impact on that wetland is above ten thousand square feet, mitigation will be required. If we're able to find a mitigation project here in Concord, instead of doing an in-lu fee or another alternative for mitigation, again, it provides us the opportunity to provide help within the city. That's great. Sorry, you've been able to forward me information regarding a project, which is, we'll say shovel-ready. And it's incumbent on us to try and move ourselves quickly enough through our approval process to see if we can support that project. So great that there's already an opportunity identified. I would say the general feeling of the Conservation Commission was that, similar to what I had said, the functions and values are very low. It's a conveyance swell essentially of taking culverted runoff from one culvert into another. There are no rare and endangered species that were identified on the subject parcel, so when we start to peel back the onion a little bit to look at what concerns there may be with impacting a wetland, there's far fewer concerns with this. So we'll have to go through the appropriate process, both with Conservation Commission as well as the Wetlands Bureau, to make sure that the impacts that we have are appropriate. We've already reached out to DES in regards to this application, so they have knowledge of what we're proposing. And it's our understanding that this is consistent with expectations, given the functions of the wetland, and that the functions lost by this wetland can be recreated with the incorporation of a good stormwater management system to treat that stormwater before it discharges further out of the property. So we've talked a little bit about the wetlands. We've talked about the fact that this is a bit of steep topography. Relative to Break a Day Drive, the geometry of the intersection is not stellar, but I would note that the capacity of the intersection is tremendous. So when we look at our first phase of the development and the scoping of a traffic study, which will take place on October seventh, our expectation is that this is going to be a regional draw. Our traffic is very highway centric. We've prepared a gravity model basically to support that, and that would be the direction in which we take our traffic study. I know we always have concerns with adding traffic to Loudoun Road and that the immediate area further to the west, but the gravity model that we've created basically says our traffic comes from the highway. Even something that is more localized will also come from the highway. So that's another little bit of an interesting factor relative to the site. We know that we may have to make some minor improvements to the geometry of Break a Day Drive, both for the initial phase and that the expectation would be for the future phases where the project really expands, the likelihood of a signalized intersection here is what our expectation is. So we know a little bit about the existing site and some of its troubles. Let's talk about how we are gonna maximize its potential. So the plan that is up before you shows the location of the charitable gaming hall. Just for ease of reference, we've identified some of the building components. The back of house, which includes office areas, pantries, and the like, is located to the back of the building. The restaurant and bar area, as well as the kitchen and storage that Andy had mentioned in his opening, is located more so to the north of the building. That's very much intentional. With the future expansion, the idea is you have one centralized kitchen, so it provides the best economy of scale as far as the opportunity to expand the site. Relative to the site layout, you can see the darker areas are the areas where we're expecting there to be new pavement. We'll have two accessways. The most immediate entrance off of Break a Day Drive provides access up to the Porcasheer, which has been strategically placed to provide interconnection to a future hotel and conference center. So that way, we have one entrance and it really limits the impacts to the facility when they look to expand in the future. There will be parking located in front of the building to the east. If we go further east, we can see the secondary access route, which provides access to the loading dock. One revision that we've already incorporated in this is based off of feedback from the fire department. They want to make sure they see an appropriate turnaround. There's now a hammerhead Y that's been designed in the back here to make sure that those turns can be facilitated for oversized vehicles and for the fire department. As we work our way west, we can see some of the elements, other elements of the parking lot. As I had mentioned, there is a fair amount of grade change, so the area that you see in green essentially would be steep slope. Opposed to just leaving this as grass or otherwise, our expectation is we're gonna use a conservation mix, basically a wildfire mix, provides benefits to our ecology and also limits the need for maintenance. So when we talk about having to mow that area to keep it watered or otherwise, it allows us to eliminate those items. The landscaping itself within the parking lot, we've tried to accentuate the Concord feel, the state of New Hampshire feel. There'll be a system of river birches as you approach to really frame the entrance and direct the individual's attention directly towards the Porcasheer. And we can also see relative to the arrangement of landscaping throughout. Again, we're trying to direct or funnel people towards the primary entrance. So we had a chance to talk a little bit about the site layout. I'll touch real brief on stormwater, because this is design review. I don't think we need to go overboard. There'll be one large centrally located stormwater management area, which is designated by this dark green area. What we've done is we've oversized that to help also accommodate for the future expansion, so that again, that we can maximize that use and also limit the amount of rework that has to be done as part of this project. I think at that point, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna pause. Noting, obviously, extension of public water, extension of public sewer, those are obviously going to be important to this facility. But if I can flip a little bit to the architectural component, we did have the opportunity to meet with Architectural Design Review. Thought it was a very productive conversation. I'm gonna pull up our architectural renderings. I would say the largest element of feedback we took back, other than the fact that they appreciated what we were doing with trying to recreate kind of that mill building feel, was trying to find a more modernized approach to it, whether that's incorporation of maybe some larger windows, bump outs or otherwise, but something that'll make you feel like, all right, this has the feel of a traditional mill building, but how can we make this feel a little bit more modernized? Some of the other conversation points took place, we're in relationship to green space. For the first phase of the project, there's an abundance. In the second phase of the project, you do see that it is a lot of pavement and building. But as was noted by several members of the Architectural Design Review Committee, the intent is to get people inside, redirecting either to the gaming area, the conference center, or otherwise as part of those future phases of the project. We are working to try and combine the elements that were discussed in that ADR within the program that we currently have, making sure that it's a good fit. We're gonna continue to work towards that. This was really our first pass at what the rendering would look like. This is the direct view of the front of the building, and I'll just flip real quick through a couple of the other renderings so that we can get a little bit of an idea of sightline. Because one of the things that we thought was going to be of great importance is what does this facility look like from the adjacent Loudoun Road? So this is the intersection with Loudoun Road and Sheep Davis Road. Sightline is fairly limited. There's a twelve to fifteen foot grade change between this intersection and the finished floor of the building. We take a step back, an elevated view from that intersection, just to see, you know, what's the massing of the building in relationship to its surroundings? Is it consistent? I'll note that directly to our south here is Chapel Tractor. We'll be happy to have them as a good neighbor. One of the other elements that we had discussed as well were sightlines from 393. Given that our traffic is going to be highway centric, the expectation is we want to create as good a sightline from 393 as possible. This is the sightline heading west on 393, so just beyond exit three. There's some existing trees that are in the way. The idea is we are hoping to work with DOT on the potential to improve some sightlines. You can see from that elevated standpoint, there is actually a nice clear opening there that we could potentially provide some sightlines to either some site signage or other improvements to the building on this side that we'd like to take advantage of. And at that point, if you wouldn't mind, Jeremiah, just tell us a little bit about our structure and I'll flip back to that first.
Just give you a brief overview from the architectural standpoint, and I'll make further comments. You know, I felt that the design review was productive also, and I think that they generally liked, you know, the placement, the massing, the feel, the colors, as a good starting point, you know. I think one of the other takeaways we had was they wanted kind of, or suggested, you know, more of a consistent look around the building, rather than having a facade reproduction kind of tacked on the front, so we're evaluating that. And this is a phased building where we were looking to potentially in a second phase have the hotel on the west side and an event hall on the east side, so intentionally.
Hang on just a sec. I just want to, just for the record, I want to back up to the Architectural Design Review minutes. So in the minutes for the ADR meeting, bottom of page two, it says, "Mr. Golen stated that the phased project will begin with the hotel on the west side, the casino expansion, and meeting hall on the east side." Is that correct?
No, I think those meetings just need to be approved. That would be the phased expansion would be the hotel and conference center.
So the hotel isn't, we're not talking about the hotel at all?
No.
The only reason I brought it up was because of the architectural development at this point. We've, in materiality, we've shown the brick on the front and metal panel on the sides, because there's been less embellishment on those sides, because that was a proposed phased addition on those sides.
So, yeah, and I will note that they did make, I didn't think the architectural design, I thought they were a little critical on a couple of things. And talk to me about the metal panels, because in the notes it just says metal panels, but is it architectural panels? Are they contoured? Are they sheet metal tin? I don't know what metal panels are, so.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, this would be a steel building, so most likely it would end up being a insulated metal panel that would have, you know, potentially horizontal, you know, striation to have sort of the scale of the brick in the front to just help it meld, you know, but we're looking at a material that is economical for the back and the sides that would mesh well with the brick in the front.
Okay, all right, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Other than that, I should point out that the, you know, the main entrance is located on that southwestern corner. That's intentionally there to, you know, provide some space for queuing as cars drive up, and it's also gonna be the lobby for the future hotel on that west side, as well as entrance to the charitable gaming and restaurant there. We've also, it's important that this be, you know, have an industrial mill look, so that's what we've looked to achieve with this appearance here. We've taken some inspiration from Concord, because that was important. In terms of its appearance here, we have brick, as you can see, is the front facade, archtop windows, some brick pilasters with some rustication, some other language as far as a dark bonus at the top. The Porcasheer has sort of that industrial mill look with potentially some timber to warm it up. And we have been developing it a bit further to, you know, sew some larger windows at the top to make it feel a little more modern. I think that's a basic overview.
So we'll call that the set presentation portion of what we wanted to talk about this evening. But very much interested in, you know, is this the right location in the city for this use? This is something that in general is supported. Our expectation, this is not a variance-laced or waiver-laced project. We're very much trying to work within the confines of the regulations for the use. The only thing I think we would have that would be lacking in the initial submitted is really signage that would be taken care of at a later date, but I think for these types of projects, that is fairly typical. So our hope tonight is to get a little bit of a feel for what you think. Is this a use that makes a lot of sense for Concord, specifically in the Gateway Performance District? And have we hit the mark for the architectural?
So I do have a question on the gaming piece of it, because I imagine that there's an incredible amount of state regulations and things that need to happen to go through that. Is that process underway, or what's the, what's the, well, let me back up a step. So the property is owned by Big Step LLC. You guys are here as Concord Commitment LLC? So if the plans go forward, then the property is purchased and then the process goes through from there?
That is correct. So he apparently has a purchase and sales agreement.
Where does the approval for the state piece of it happen? Does that, does that happen before or after approval from a design perspective?
So it's a great question, and it's kind of two answers to it. So presently, we are approved to operate games of chance in the city of Concord. And that approval already exists, we're already operating under it. For the expansion like this, there's a specific game to bring in, that we are in the process of getting the approval for that as well. The state legislature passed availability of that about a year ago. I think it finally came into law. And they recently finished rules, and all of the rooms that operate facilities like this in New Hampshire are applying for it. Two of them have already been granted. The rest of us are in process of it, and we have a level of confidence we did it. Clearly, we need to have that make this happen.
So if approvals go through and there's an opportunity to build the building, whether you had gaming or not, I mean, gaming's obviously a critical piece of this, right? Yes.
Just a comment. Excuse me. For many years, I was involved with the Concord Crew Team, and we used the Dog Track up in Belmont as a fundraiser when we were building the boathouse. Am I to assume that this is, your model may be that operation? I had to get licensed with the Gaming Commission in order to facilitate using that facility for fundraising. Myself and Paul Maggiato were both on that, or existential piece of that. Now, am I to assume that this is kind of like the Dog Track used to be?
This is exactly like the Dog Track used to be. It's the exact same piece of legislation. It has morphed somewhat over the years, so the requirements on the charity, we've been able to soften up time and time again. So as you may remember, there was a time when members of the charity had to be in the facility.
We had to be there every night, sign in.
Right. So as you had to be there, you had to be there, had to sign in, you had to be there all night. Over the years, the legislature has seen fit to not make those requirements anymore. You still, the charity still needs to get licensed and recognized by the state of New Hampshire with their federal documentation that they are a 503C, and that the state of New Hampshire still tells us if the charity is qualified to receive funds or not. But once they're qualified to receive funds, then we can just work with the charity.
And we went through all of that. Now, is this opportunity open, is it open at this point in terms of, I approach you again as a member of the board of the Concord Crew Team?
Mind out.
Okay.
Yeah, so presently, every charitable gaming service in New Hampshire, we're allowed to pick charities that they receive money for ten days. So we have thirty-six charities. With this new equipment, gaming equipment that we're talking about, the state has asked us to go up to seventy, seventy-two technically, so seventy-two charities. So with the advent of getting into this building, it can allow us to double the number of charities. And it's always been our intent, and if you see who we, who we support today, I mean, we really try to focus on Concord area opportunities, and it's everything from kids, kids Little League, to Pop Warner, to veteran services, to homelessness, to people who have addiction problems. We have tried very hard to keep the money in Concord, in Concord-centric, and we'll continue to try to do that.
Beyond the technical, you know, Nick, you brought up a very good point. You asked the first question, is this the right place? Well, I don't necessarily have a problem with the use. I think, I think it's reasonable. And we have a vacant mall that has pretty much the parking, the infrastructure, everything else. Did you ever consider that site and talking to them about, because you've got plenty of room for expansion, all that's there, and I look at this site, and I know why you want this site, and one of your comments in your statement, I'm interested to know who you're talking to at DOT, if you've had those conversations. That is limited access right away. Normally, that's a no cut, no take out the hill, no nothing, because they buy all rights of view, which means you're not allowed to cut to make your facility more visible. So.
So we'll both answer, he'll answer the DOT side, I'll answer the mall side. We all, being either Concord residents or Concord business owners, are painfully aware of the challenges with the mall and the lack of the challenges with the mall and the lack of response that everyone is getting.
Didn't you hear they have an exciting announcement? They, you know, what was that?
So, I will say for the record that we have, we first approached them well over a year ago, and, look, I'm an Irishman, I know how to beat the horse. And we have tried and tried and tried and tried and tried and tried and tried over and over again, and if they would just be responsive, we would be happy to consider that, because we look at the mall, you know, as a local business owner, as a guy that owns several properties in this community, I look at just how depressing that property has become. And I would frankly love the opportunity to show what we can do to turn it into something we've, and again, we've drawn up plans, we've made presentations, we've made offer after offer after offer, and unfortunately, you're getting the same type of response that the city's getting. And if you guys could help move that in my direction, we'd be very appreciative.
Well, I appreciate your honesty that you have tried. I mean, I think that's really important, that goes a long way with me.
Yeah.
To be, you know, I'm very much pro responsible development in the city, and, you know, I hate to see us cut virgin land when there's vacant buildings and properties. So, I appreciate you at least did take a look at it. If I might kind of delve in, on your traffic scoping, now that we have determined a regional impact, I would recommend that regional planning, DOT, and the city all be involved in that scoping meeting so that you're doing one traffic study. Because I've seen developments before where when you split them and the city wants their piece, then suddenly go to the state for your driveway permit, they want something different. It'd be better to look at it all. I think you'd also be benefit from the Regional Planning Commission putting this into their actual model, their regional model, rather than in the gravity model. I have a little concern with the gravity model and your statement that everything's gonna come, or majority is gonna come in 393. Because the gravity model is somewhat, still needs some fine tuning by the engineer that's working on it.
Agreed.
The other thing I would recommend is, I see a lot of parking here, and I'm not really 100% convinced it's all needed. So, I would recommend there are several facilities, while they don't have all these amenities, there are several that are operating in the state, and you even said two already have the same license you want to go for for the extra. I would look at their trip generation and their parking, because if we don't need to build a three-story parking garage out there, one, you don't want to pay for it if you don't need it, and two, we don't want that much asphalt.
I was gonna say, if you all have the, if you all have the power and authority to vote, less parking.
It's, you gotta prove to us you need less.
Yeah, I'll help, I'll help answer part of your question, and then we'll get back to the DOT if that's comfortable.
On the parking thing, real quick, so I know you've done your due diligence, gone to the Brook, all that kind of stuff, and, because when you go there and you see that massive amount of parking, and that's what, and I'm glad you brought that up, because you look at a thou, I thought, a thousand spaces, holy crap. You know, so I look at it, because I know I've been to the Brook for one of those events that was benefiting one of the nonprofits, and it was just way too much parking. I mean, it was like, we only, we all huddled up toward the front with our cars, and you look, and it was like a football field empty of parking, so.
And I'm a strong advocate for not over-parking also, and we've heard that reiterated from the board and from staff, is, you know, let's build what we need to, let's design and plan for what's required, and if it's ever needed, we have the opportunity, otherwise, it's not needed to be built. So, you know, in order to obviously avoid, you know, zoning relief or otherwise, and the scrutiny that's involved with that, we haven't, we weren't seeking a reduction in parking. We realize there are conditional use permits that are available to try and reduce that parking as long as there's space on site. I think the most important point to make is, the parking garage is one option. There are a fair amount of parking lots in this immediate area that are underutilized for which transport can be arranged or shuttle service from point A to point B. It was one of the things we reviewed with Architectural Design Review as well, to say that that is a possibility. The parking garage would provide the necessary parking per the ordinance. And to bring forth a phased development project, we need to show that we could accommodate that parking. Given that that is down the line, there are a lot of cards still on the table for how parking could best be accomplished for the site. And if anything, phase one is that trial run. All right, we've got 367 parking spaces for a 43, 44,000 square foot facility. How does it perform? You know, we're talking 634 gaming stations. How do they perform parking space versus station? We've reviewed, you know, the IT totals, and there's always room for interpretation. But we also have Bill Dow from Dow Design, who's our charitable gaming expert, who's also helping guide us to make sure that the parking that we provide, as well as other amenities, is consistent with industry standards. As of right now for this first phase, we feel it is consistent. As we start to work our way into those future phases, I think it becomes a little bit more murky. So, I think the opportunity to just be able to show, all right, for phase one, this works, this fits within the confines of design. For phase two, if necessary, this could be accomplished to achieve the necessary parking per the ordinance. Between now and then, ideally, we have that trial run to really understand what our parking needs are. IT is great for trip generation, and their parking standards provide a good go-by, but it's not the be-all, end-all. And as an engineer, you have to take each bit of information and regionalize it and say, well, how does that affect within my community if it was a charitable gaming facility in Oregon? Not apples to apples.
Well, that and the IT is not talking charitable gaming. They're talking full, all-out casinos, other than on the Vegas and Atlantic Strip. So, you're talking a total different level of clientele, the amenities, the type of facility it is compared to what you're talking here. So, I agree. I think the IT rates might even be high for your trip generation. Now, how many times have you guys all heard me say that? I usually don't say I think they're high. I usually tell you.
That's a marquee moment.
Mark this day in time.
I mean, I think it's important on this one to look at some of these others that are in the state. It helps you, because if your trip generation isn't really gonna be there, you don't want to be paying for offsite improvements and all these other things.
So, to that end, recent approvals in Salem, I think there was also one in Nashua, we've evaluated those as part of our traffic study to make sure that the numbers that we are providing are consistent with recent approvals. Some of those facilities have already been built, and we're looking to expand, others were new, so there's a little bit of interpretation in any of the data, but I think the baseline that we've received thus far supports what we've put forth.
What's the, what's the travel coming in, though? Are you getting a lot of people coming over the border like you used to for Kino, where your people went over the border into Methuen from Salem? Or are they coming into New Hampshire for any reason, or no?
And are you talking Concord-specific?
No.
Fucking Nashville, Salem.
Yeah, so industry-specific, there's a significant amount that's coming over from the border.
Right, so those might not be good ones to compare, as much as the Bingo Hall, or some other place that you could look at.
Seabrook.
But at the same token, if you're looking up in the casino in Maine, that's a full-blown casino.
Yeah.
And they're saying they're getting upwards of 32% of their visitors from New Hampshire. So, does it migrate?
Because of where it's located, northern, it's a little easier to cut across, but yeah.
Yeah. There's no question that the operations that are on the border are a different type of an operation than what we are, what we are doing, and their clientele and their driving patterns are such.
So, and I think you're hearing that we're receptive to looking at options that may look at something and say, hey, this is what Vegas does, but that's not maybe what we need here for this particular type of an environment.
And that is the way we are.
Maybe it is, but again, I think there's gotta be some, you know, some realistic look at it to throw it in the sand and see if it works, and if it doesn't, expand it and move on. Suzanne?
Yeah, in the build-out concept, can you actually build that much on a site within our regulations? I mean, there's, it's all built.
Yeah, it's 12 acres, though. I mean, I got a lot.
Yeah, so nearly 13, actually, it's just over 13 with the adjacent lot that's gonna be consolidated.
Well, you can't put a hotel on it, you can't do all that.
Eighty percent is max lot coverage, and we chip in at about 64, 65, what's proposed.
So, to the question of location, I mean, if you think of the buildable lots in New Hamp, in Concord, in the greater Concord area, there are not a lot of them. So, if you had to put a 12-acre lot down and put a building like this in, whether you're in favor of casinos or not, but this type of a multipurpose type of facility, there's not a lot of places you could put it, and this fits a lot of the bills and checks a lot of the boxes, for me anyways.
I get that, but I was just surprised, looking at it, I thought that, I mean, there's no space left for like even onsite stormwater management. I mean, it's all gotta be.
So, we can help with that. So, we've had master plan for that element in the first phase, you can see.
Is there another lot there that we're not seeing?
Yes, well, to the extent that there is also a triangular lot right here, so there's lots 36 and 37. Lot 37 is only .4 acres, so the vast majority is of it is Lot 36, which is 12.2, 12.6 acres. So, in the aggregate, it's just over 13. But to the point of stormwater management, when you're looking at a facility like this, which we know wants to be phased, we have to plan for that. So, we've oversized the initial stormwater management area to maximize the area that's available relative to that first phase of design. And then master plan, well, how would we get to that with the drainage running in the future? So that the components that would be built either for the hotel and conference center, or a parking garage, or if it's just parking, that it can all still get to the lowest point on the site, which is where the existing utility infrastructure is for stormwater to ultimately discharge into. The converse, or the alternate, is, you know, more point source recharge located within the upper parking lot. It is a balance, we need our separation from estimated seasonal groundwater, but as part of our initial due diligence, Andy had the foresight that was provided by Acumen Construction to go out and hire a geotech and evaluate the site. So, we had an understanding of what our constraints were for reuse of this existing material, potential ledge impacts, which showed none, and then also relative to groundwater considerations, which were not as much of a concern as what we were originally forecasting. So, it does provide us the opportunity to manage our stormwater in really the northern portion of the site, and then ultimately discharge it and provide some level of attenuation on the southern end of the site. But yeah, it's been fun, like, this is a neat project. Those phased developments, they really make you think on how all these little pieces get put together.
So, topography, and I saw that there's an elevation in here, but I can't read it. So, looking at it, top of the lot would be the first phase of the building, is that the high point?
No, so the high point on the site is really the northwest corner up here. And elevationally between this point, and actually, the high point's just off property. As we work our way across that site, what do we have? It's 86 feet of grade change approximately.
How many?
Eighty-six feet.
Eight-six, 86 feet?
Yep, from just offsite property down to where our site driveway is. And then there's an additional four or five feet of grade change down to the intersection itself. So, we look at where the finished floor elevation of the building is in relationship to the intersection, it sits 12, 15 feet above it.
Maybe that's why I couldn't read it, because I couldn't imagine.
But the idea is, we gotta balance our cut spills to some extent here. We know there's a tremendous amount of cut. There is an area of wetlands that's being impacted, so there is an overdig to remove those unsuitable soils that would be required. It's not a perfect balanced site, but we're trying to endeavor as best we can to make this economical, so that that first phase can be as robust as possible to then support those future phases.
And I trust that the runoff coming down that hill from the very top corner towards the future, future hotel is gonna be caught and pushed to the swell and, or down into the.
So, we've looked at, we've master planned the grading, that's part of the coordinated effort with DOT, evaluating whether or not it impacts to limited access right away, would be warranted and be in the public's best interest, because in the end, that's what the story is, that's what the name of it is. We've been able to design the grades such that it would drain essentially within to our stormwater management area, so we can get some additional treatment before it leaves the site. We have plenty of resources where we can evaluate what those tributary areas are to the property. It's not as much runoff as I was expecting, I think 50-year storm or neighborhood 10, 12 CFS, which is still a good chunk of runoff, but we, allows us to master plan and look at, all right, how do we design our channels to best convey it? What elements can we incorporate when our stormwater management plan to actually provide some additional treatment, where the treatment is lost via the wetlands that would be impacted?
So, what's the, what's the, you know, the five-year-out look at this property from a, from a concept to finished product? And again, take it for what it's worth, but, you know, I don't want to see, you know, $3 buffet, blinking neon with the loosest slots in the city messaging and all of these typical, all of these typical casinos.
This is what we're trying to accomplish.
And I think that's the, that's the important thing, that we glossed over it quickly, but, you know, the mill building, the look, the historic building, the signage is gonna mirror that, and the messaging is gonna mirror that, and the quality is gonna be at a point where, oh my goodness, I can't wait to go there tonight.
So, think Tuscan Market.
Yeah, perfect example then, okay, good.
So, when I started this process.
Why can't you put one of those up here? We need one of those, too.
Joe's a great guy, and I think he's a great businessman, and has a great model. I want this to be like Tuscan Market. I think he's done a great job. If any of you have not been down to Salem, New Hampshire to check out Tuscan Market.
It's unbelievable.
It's cool, right? It's just, it has a great vibe to it, it's got great architecture, it's very traditional yet modern at the same time. So, it looks very traditional from the outside, you walk inside, it's open ceilings, it's great metal, it's good glass.
Could do that up at exit 17.
So, so I.
We could do that up at exit 17.
Tuscan Market is a great place. So, so I start with.
We're the Rosios. Maybe they're watching.
I'm sorry, Andy, go ahead, I apologize.
So, when I started thinking about what we wanted to look like, we had started by saying we wanted to make it look like a traditional New England barn and farmhouse, right? And that was kind of where I was walking with it, because I grew up between two farms in Lebanon, New Hampshire, worked them as a kid, and it's just, there's something to me about our tradition, right? But then you go to Tuscan Market, and you're like, this is just cool, right? It's just great architecture, it looks really cool, and, you know, when you, when you drive through Manchester and look at the industrial building, and come to Concord, look at Main Street, and saw how it all was like that, and you look at Franklin, just everything that makes us as a people who we have always been, that's just so ingrained who we are. And so, you know, I walk at Tuscan Market, and I was like, you know, that's, that's just kind of like what we look like. So, we're, we're trying to create a facility and a facade, and quite frankly, an offering to the people that is sophisticated. And we think this kind of does that.
Yeah, okay, good.
You didn't answer my other question. I'm not gonna let you out of it.
I was gonna see.
Oh, no, no, no.
We went to the top. We're, we have been directly corresponding with Assistant Commissioner Bill Cass.
Okay, because I know a developer has come to the state before about that same lot and asked to cut down the hill, and they were told flat out, no, because it comes under federal guidelines with LA.
And the reality is that we have to look at, you know, what is the city of Concord? What are the people of Concord? You know, for the state of New Hampshire, what are they getting out of that? Why is that a benefit?
Maybe they didn't ask right.
Well, it's limited access right away, it's bought with federal funds, so a lot of times, there's a sticky issue.
There's a certain criteria you have to meet, and the chances are, maybe that development didn't meet that criteria. We're hopeful that we can.
And also remember, there's a parking lot behind my restaurant right downtown that was bought with federal land, and the city saw best to put 144 parking spots there, so if it can be done.
All right, what else we got for questions?
The only other thing I had was, I'm not a big fan of your access to your back parking lot being through your loading zone, especially if you're telling me you just put a hammerhead, so the trucks all have to back up to turn around while patrons are trying to drive through that area.
The expectation is that's overflow parking and employee parking, which could certainly be signed as such, but duly noted.
You can say it's overflow, it's, yeah, design around it. I would highly recommend you come back, and I'm gonna continue to push to provide an access around the other corner by the parking garage, because it's just not a good mix. Someone's gonna get hurt.
So, could, could you go through, wow, no, forget it.
Yeah, you go through the parking.
Go through the parking garage.
So, that is, that is the access to the back. I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. So, that is the access to the east, which is really for access to the loading dock, provides just a secondary means of egress from the property. The idea is you would drive through the parking garage to gain access to the back. So, there is two points of access.
And again, I think we'll have conversations, if you guys are willing to, and phase one's gonna teach us a tremendous lot, a tremendous amount about what we need for parking. You know, we all know that parking garage is like $30,000 of space, right? They're not cheap. And if we don't need it, I look where that parking garage is right now and say, well, if we don't need it, it just becomes parked, one level parking, which provides a lot of openness for us. And I think, I think time will tell pretty quick, once we get open to.
$30,000 a spot, holy cow, $30,000 a spot.
Yes, sir.
Just wait till you go in there.
I was gonna say, yeah.
Wow, okay, other questions, concerns, comments? Nothing else? Looks great, I think, again, you got some feedback from us, I think it's, it's a project we, we look forward to seeing kind of the next steps and move forward.
We're excited, too. So, we'll take out of this, in general, it seems like this is the right location for this type of, type of use.
I think it's a great location, so I don't have a problem with location at all.
All right, well, let's get the look and feel right. Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you.
Everyone, thank you so much for your time.
Thanks very much, good presentation. Okay, call Earl and have Earl come back, but we got item eight H and eight I are not going to be heard tonight, and we've got item nine A, referral from city council regarding request from the U.S. Army National Guard for discontinuance of a dead-end portion of Pembroke Road. Look at me reading that into the record, if we could get a quick update on that, Heather?
Sure, to make this as brief as possible, I'm actually, Nick, could you bring up the plan, so that I can just...
Sure. Their TF Moran plan's awesome.
Nick is, yeah.
I'm the manager of this project.
And you can't charge us for this.
Do you want the plan or the report?
Um, the plan. So, they are doing a very small addition onto the corner of the building, does everybody know where this is? By Loudon Road and the Pembroke Road, they're doing a very small addition on the corner of that building.
CO4, I think, is probably the plan you want.
Yep.
And a portion of the existing building is actually in the right-of-way, and they have been using the right-of-way for their, for parking and, you know, various other things. They've, they've been using it like it was their own backyard, so they are now officially requesting from the city a, a license to put these improvements in the right-of-way and a, and a discontinuance, which is what this referral is, to discontinue a portion of the right-of-way for both the very tiny sliver of the existing building and the portion of the addition which they're putting on. Actually, we should probably just look at the architectural elevations, they're, they're much more graphically...
Because at the end of the setters, that's a separate.
Yeah, I think it's a, it should be under, oh my goodness, did I not put it in there?
I didn't see, I didn't see elevation.
The idea is that...
Oh, those you gave, where did I get the elevations from?
They got them from me somehow, I suppose.
Do you have them?
I don't, but I can give a little bit of an overview, but the, the idea is that it's a beautification project.
Yeah.
They're enhancing...
It looks very nice.
They're enhancing, enhancing the visual element on that corner, I think we've all driven through that intersection, it's not the most attractive, but the idea is, this is also, it's not only the aesthetics of the building, but it also provides a new wayfinding point for veterans seeking assistance. These are folks that are going to be there under appointment, so there's a limited parking area, but it's conducive to their needs. It's also going to prevent people accessing the more secure parts of the grounds, that's not appropriate, and really reducing the number of turnarounds and rejections from the gates, and helping provide the folks that need the service, the service they need.
One question?
I wanted to show that discontinuance.
You had a question? Jeff?
How come the parking isn't flipped toward the building side, so you can have a sidewalk along the building for like your eighty-eight spaces?
Related to layout? I wasn't involved with the original concept, but I think it also had to do in part with, you'd be now moving parking spaces within the area of discontinuance as well, and given that we're already asking for discontinuance for the building, now asking for discontinuance for building and parking.
Well, the parking is going to be within the discontinuance that you're proposing.
That'll be within a leased area, so the way that we approach that is for the building, and actually, Heather, I do have the elevations, I lied.
Oh.
I did remember it earlier before I left.
Start with, thank you.
Thanks.
I apologize, I did not realize they were...
So, the building portion would be a discontinuance, but everything else that's outside of that would be leased, so, and the, the guard is aware that that would be a, be a restriction.
It looks a thousand percent better, so...
Page seven is what we're...
So, run that by me again, why aren't we just discontinuing that entire portion of the street, instead of that, just the sliver around the building?
Yeah.
That was a recommendation from staff to, because we didn't, we don't like to give up right of way if we don't have to, and we don't need to in this case. The desire on behalf of the city was to keep the right-of-way for future use if we might want it or need it. We couldn't do a license for the whole thing, because apparently, I don't know the legal ins and outs, but you can't do a license...
It was explained at some point that we couldn't do it.
You can't do the license for a built structure, so you have to discontinue for the built structure, and...
Did you pull up page seven? Seven of eight?
Page seven and eight is the grading, is that what we're looking for? What's the title on the sheet you're looking for?
Mine actually, it is the grading plan, but it's most clear on mine.
CO5, that's what I said.
You know, but I just, I couldn't see at all the actual lines. So, that's what I'm asking for this one.
So, I don't, I don't think this is a huge...
This is Wendy's right here.
I don't think, I don't think this is a huge ask, I don't know that we need to get to too much detail.
No, I just, I was just curious, that's...
And I, and I, and I think it's just normal process where the city doesn't want to give up anything, it doesn't, it doesn't have to. So, and it's important, I think, when I was talking to Heather about this before, so people to do certain things would have to go through the gate and do the security clearance and do all kinds of other things, this will allow them to go into an unsecured area without going through any of that stuff.
So, just, just to clarify, there's this little tiny sliver of the existing building that is in the, in the right-of-way, and this is the built portion, and then here's the canopy, it's like a, it's not a fabric canopy, so the discontinuance is, you know, the area of the canopy, and then it extends down so that it covers the approach, you know, basically the building for any potential encroachments from the building.
And this will come back as a minor site plan application once this is completed, so there will be further opportunities for discussion.
I don't know that well, because...
Is it the performance district? It came in as a minor site plan, that's why you're doing this.
Oh, you're right, you're correct, sorry.
If we don't want to, that's fine.
No, no, I apologize.
I'm happy with skipping a step.
No, that was part of the deal, it was subject to...
Let's, let's wrap this up, so, staff recommends that the supporting of the discontinuation of a portion of the street recommends a license agreement for the private improvements to the public right of way. From a, from our perspective, from the board's perspective, any objections to that recommendation? If not, we'll take a motion to recommend that staff recommend the discontinuation of a portion of the street and recommends a license agreement for the private improvements to the public right of way. If someone would like to make that motion?
So moved.
And second? All second, all those in favor?
Aye.